Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening for the May 13th, 2025 meeting. AGP, are we good?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brandon, can I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We all stand, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'm going to start off this evening with just a few... Oh, I'm going to start off by asking the city clerk to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Echols.
Here.
Councilmember Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember LaFaye.
Here.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Here.
And Mayor Wixom.
Here. Thank you. I'm going to start off this evening with just a brief housekeeping. I just want to remind ourselves up here on the dais, as well as those of you attending this evening, of our civility policies and ask that your comments this evening are directed towards council, not towards other members of the audience, and that you refrain from clapping or booing. We usually just wave some hands to show support if you're supporting an item. I just ask that respectfully of everyone here, so everyone feels that they can speak freely and be supported. Also, I have a lot of speaker slips this evening, so I will be going to two minutes. You'll have two minutes. If you can do it in less than two minutes, that's for general public comment items, not on the agenda. And if we go past about 45 minutes, I'm going to close public comment, general public comment, and move it to the end of the evening, because I do have a lot of speaker slips for other things on the agenda. So, thank you for that. I appreciate everybody being here this evening, and I will turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Schultz.
Good evening. Council met and closed session prior to the regular session to discuss four real property negotiations. The property negotiations were 1287 Embarkadero, 781 Market, and 695 Harbor. As to those three items, no action was taken and requires reporting. Under the fourth item for the Moro Elementary, council directed staff to continue to negotiate with the district on the purchase of the property and to send a formal written notice to the district pursuant to government code 54223. The last item on the closed session agenda was the public employment of the city attorney. No action was taken under that item that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. And we're going to kick off with Mayor and council member reports, announcements, and presentations. I'll start to my right with Councilmember LaFaye.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to announce that I attended Homelessness is a Housing Problem last Thursday in San Luis Obispo, and this was put on by Greg Colvin. He's a University of Washington professor. And what it was all about was understanding the real causes of homelessness and solutions for the real change. I mean, I don't think there's any solutions that were... or conclusions that were gathered there, but it was very informative, and so I was glad I went. I also went to the Blessing of the Fleet two weeks ago Sunday. That was a nice event. Then I also went to the Friends of the Moro Bay Elementary Forum, put on by myself and Zara at the community center. We had probably a good hundred people there discussing the Moro Bay Elementary School site. And I also went to Jeff Echols' Open Dialogue at Delmar Park on Saturday. Jeff did a very good job in discussing a lot of topics for the city here. And the last but not least here is that I'm about ready to put another boating resource guide together, put on by the Friends of the Moro Bay Harbor Department. If anyone in the audience would like to be in it, contact me. This gets put out every two years, and so we're putting this together for the Harbor Department and for the boating community. That's it.
Okay. Let's see. I went to the... Did you ever do the kite festival? Was that the last week?
That was a while.
Oh, okay. I'll skip that one. I did some of the same things as my fellow council member here, Friends of the Moro Elementary Town Hall meeting, which was really well-attended. I appreciated that we had three other council members. I think we would have had all of them if they had all been in town, and as well as our community development director and our city manager. They were all present, and I thought that was... showed a lot of strength, and it was... I appreciate that they all came. Thank you. There were many Moro Elementary alumni and former staff as well, and I felt like the information provided was really, really informative. They... This group is really hardworking, and I'm excited to, you know, to be working with them. They've already gotten their official nonprofit status, so anyone that wants to make a donation to preserve Moro Elementary campus in our community can make a tax refundable donation now. I met with... I convened a meeting with... through Michael Wamboldt to visit Moro Bay. After listening, I reported out several weeks ago that I was in a meeting, a community meeting, where I heard the CFAC Subcommittee members, Brian Dorfman and Jean Johnson, speak about revenue-enhancing ideas. And so I had already kind of established a bit of a relationship with the... some of the hoteliers, and I thought that they would be interested in the information. And so I asked Michael Wamboldt to convene a meeting... help me convene a meeting, and he did. And I invited my friend, my fellow council member, Bill LaFaye, to come as well, and I think it was a really, really great group to get together and get the conversation started. Jean and Brian have come up with a lot of ideas about revenue enhancement that are parallel to what Visit Moro Bay does, kind of wanting to attract Cal Poly students and their parents to coming to Moro Bay. And, you know, we just talked about stuff like that. It was really interesting. I also attended one of Jeff... Councilmember Echols' Town Hall meetings on Saturday. It was well-attended as well. And then I do want to clarify, at the last meeting, I said... let's see, I have it right here. I said I... I made a comment that I think may have come off incorrectly, and I wanted to clarify that. When we were talking about the roundabout and the entrances to Moro Bay and how they look, I stated that they were not beautiful, and I still don't think that the actual entrances are beautiful. And I wanted to clarify that because I know that Moro Bay in Bloom does a lot of work to the roundabout entrance, and I wasn't considering that, in my opinion. I was considering, you know, the gas stations and the vacant U-Haul lot. So, I really value the work that Moro Bay in Bloom does, and I've said that up here many times, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows that. I did the next morning... I woke up thinking about that, and the next morning I emailed Walter and Jane Heath and apologized for that, and so I just wanted to publicly do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let people know that the CFAC, which is our finance committee, will be meeting next Tuesday, May 20th, at 3:00, right here in this room, the Vets Hall. For those of you that are interested in anything finances or budget, or you want to hear more about the revenue stream, the committee that Councilmember Landrum was speaking about, you can hear more about that there when they speak to their findings, and hopefully you'll come on by as the liaison. I welcome you. I also wanted to take a moment to talk about how busy it was on the Embarkadero this last weekend. I don't know if any of you were able to go down there. My husband and I were kind of crazy like that. We actually enjoy the tourists, so we took our dog down there, and we went to Dockside Two and had some fish and chips and walked the harbor walk, and we actually saw the sauna that Councilmember LaFaye was talking about. It's super cool. It's like almost this large, like wine barrel-looking thing that you might see right outside Coleman Park... Coleman Beach there. It's got a gorgeous view. I think it's about $30 a session. There's a QR code on a sandwich board outside of it, but I know people who have done it and said it's just absolutely incredible with the view there, so something to go check out, even if you don't want to do it. I also wanted to circle back around, lastly, to something that I spoke to at the last meeting during my report, and that was basically creating, you know, laying the foundation for common ground in order to reach a consensus. And I spoke about how we agree on things, how many things we agree on as opposed to disagree. And so tonight, I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge all the things that I was thinking of in the ways that we agree. And during our goal session process, these two things were identified, one of which was financial security, and the other one was a good quality of life. I think that we can all agree, I know the five of us did, that that was definitely two things that our goals came out of, so we agree there. I think that as humans, we can all agree that we want clean air, we want clean water, ample amount of it, we want reliable electricity, we want our Wi-Fi. I think that we can also agree that we want goods and services that we need and that we also desire. We want to have an ease with getting to them, whether that's walking or riding our bike or driving. We want to preserve our environment, our natural habitat, all the little creatures that live in and among them. You know, we want to support and protect all of the community spaces that we cherish together. These things we can definitely agree on. I think sometimes what we end up disagreeing on is the how of things, and this is a community of very robust communication. I mean, look at this... Look at this room right now. It's absolutely amazing, so welcome to all of you. But I can tell you that we've done a lot of work, a lot of work in the past few years, and we do have our foundation. And it happened eight years ago, and it's called the 2017 Economic Roadmap and the 2017 Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. And I encourage you to go and read those. Look them up on our website. In the next two years, we're going to be actually very soon embarking on our waterfront master planning, and I hope that you stay in tune with that as well, because by the time we're done, we'll have all the plans that we need to move forward, and then it's just about agreeing to implement. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief, because we have a lot of folks in the house tonight, and I bet you all have something to say, and it's more important that you're heard than I am. I did host two town halls this last week, had almost 100 people between the two. It was pretty evenly split, about 50/50. Heard a lot about the flagpole policy and heard a lot about the roundabout, and I just want to assure everyone that was there is that I actively listened and have taken all those comments under consideration, and I appreciate you being there. That's one of the wonderful things about a small community like this, a small town, is that our government is literally right in front of us, and we can look our local electeds in the face, and I consider myself, as an elected official, your public servant, and I will always do my best for you. That's my pledge to you. I will mention, too, that with regard to the flagpole policy, I'm going to pull that off of the consent agenda so that it will deserve proper discussion and consideration. And, you know, one of the things that I witnessed... I'll close in saying this. One of the things that I witnessed during the two town halls was really exhilarating. It was the fact that there were so many impassioned individuals with such strong opinions and such varied opinions at the same meeting, but everyone to the person was respectful to each other and caring and patient with each other, listened to each other. And I just... I walked away with such a good feeling in terms of our community and the love and patience and kindness that we do exhibit to each other. And so I wanted to thank everyone for setting an example that was at those meetings. And I'll mention... The mayor mentioned decorum during these meetings, so I want to follow that up relative to these meetings. It's so important that when we listen, we do get passionate about things, but there've been times in these chambers here when someone's up at the podium and other folks out in the audience will make some comments or jeers, and that's not very loving to the other person. So, I ask for your indulgence for anyone tonight, and of course, moving forward, that's up at that podium, to pay them the same respect that you would like paid to you. And then, lastly, with our staff members. You know, our staff members work diligently and hard day in and day out. They're dedicated to this city, and they just put their time, effort, energy, and love into serving all of us, and so I honor and respect the work that our staff members do, and I do my ultimate best to treat them with respect and kindness, and I would ask that of our citizens as well. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So, I'm going to piggyback on some of those comments of events that were held that we all attended. I was down there with Councilmember LaFaye at Blessing of the Fleet, and I want to thank our fishing community, as well as our public safety community on the waterfront. It was a beautiful event, it always is, and Dockside for hosting the meal for all those who attended the Blessing of the Fleet. We also had the kite festival last week, I guess a few weeks ago now, and the amazing thing about that, and of course, I put my information away that I was going to share with you, was the outreach that we got. It ended up being syndicated and picked up and had over 128 million views through that. So, Moro Bay is definitely being seen out there worldwide. What a great opportunity, and the Tourism Bureau is reporting for 2024 great improvements for SLOCal and Visit Moro Bay, both in our economic gains, so a lot for us to be proud of. I had the opportunity to do Bike to School last week on Wednesday and attend Delmar. Thank you to the Police Department for escorting all the kids. There was probably about 50 kids who participated in that, and it was a lot of fun. Also, attended an RTA meeting that was part of Bike to School and was invited to Meals That Deliver. I would encourage anybody who knows someone homebound that is in need of a nutritional meal to reach out to these resources. Meals That Deliver is available five days a week here locally, as well as La Socos. React Meeting. I attended a React meeting and heard from Speaker Debbie Arnold at that, as well as attending the two town hall meetings that the three council members up here put on. This Saturday, the Moro Bay High School will be hanging two banners, and they'll have a little parade down on the Embarkadero. They're going to be hanging banners for CIF for the girls' cross-country team and the girls' water polo team, so a lot of proud moments there for the students and faculty and parents. The... I'm sure you all saw the dredge out there. You can't hardly miss it. It's that time of year, so they'll be getting the dredge over the next few weeks or month, I suppose. And all of you who came to the meeting this evening, got the opportunity, one way or another, most likely to drive on those beautiful paved streets on Main Street, so shout out to our Public Works Department and all their hard work, the engineers working with those companies. Beautiful $4 million worth of paving and the striping, and everything looks great. We're really happy about that. This week, Thursday, will be a police memorial down at Tidlin's Park in the morning, and I have the privilege of hosting the monthly mayor's meeting. We meet once a month in Moro Bay, and Assemblymember Addus will be speaking, so I know she will be in the district for any of those of you looking to reach out to her office. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager for reports and announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I... There's just a lot of going on in our beautiful city, and I wanted to take a few minutes to update everybody on the things that...
AGP, could you give us a hand, please?
We... I want to take a few minutes to talk about things that are happening around our city that are of note. So, our city council... City Council goals, the flyer has been out, and upon the robust discussion that the community had since February, and this flyer captured the three major goals that the city council set for the next couple of years: economic, vitality, and physical health, and infrastructure, resiliency, and Moro Elementary School site. And this flyer is on the city's website. And the city... For 28 years in a row, the city has been earning this Tree City recognition from Harbor Day Foundation. And this year, what makes... To add to this award, the city's Public Works Department also earned their Growth Award, and it's just... These two awards are both very special. It's a shared effort between the city staff and our beloved Moro Bay in Bloom. Without volunteers' help, and we're not able to earn these and those distinguished awards. So, and I... This is really a testament to our community spirit and working together and getting recognized, making our city better and better every day. And as Mayor stated earlier, yes, we have done paving, and there's a picture of the streets, and so road paving, the scheduled striping is going to conclude within the next two weeks. And some parking spots expected... Are expected to be limited on Embarkadero because the implementation of the new law, AB 413, which our Public Works Department and Police Department has been meeting with some business about. And also want to point out the falconer... Our... This bird is going around town right now, trying to move around seagulls. This is a very sustainable approach to remove the seagull issues, and here's our Public Works Director with this very use... Very effective falcon here. And then, on the waterfront master plan, as introduced by Mayor Protim Edwards, we're really making a lot of progress on that, and the selection committee had interviewed 10 proposals, interviewed four, sorry, after we received 10 very qualified proposals, and we're very close to get a selection. And then, the first monologue meeting is scheduled for Thursday, is really for Thursday, June 5th, and it's going to be a public meeting in this room, and public are welcome to attend. I also wanted to talk about our... The transition of our transit system. On June 1st, the Slow... The RTA will begin operating in Moro Bay Transit, and the picture on top is the RTA's bus, and the one, the white one, is on the bottom, is Moro Bay bus, and these two are going to be around the town. And RTA also have this new feature called Transit Tracker, and you can... For folks who use bus, you can put this on your phone, and then you can see the schedule of the bus, the route. Nothing has changed other than just the transit, and the buses are looking different, and then this new feature. Also, wanted to showcase the new trashcans on Embarkadero. These are, again, the Public Works Department had... Were able to get these trashcans and together worked really hard, and they look great. We heard... We had a lot of great comments in there on Embarkadero. Around the other departments, here we have Police Department welcomed the therapy canine... Canine. His name is Rocky, and if you see the police chief driving with Rocky, please do not give her a hard time, because that's actually... Rocky is at work, doing good things. And then, we also... If maybe folks who use our website may have noticed that the city's website has been refreshed with some minor updates, and there's a calendar out there now, and also we removed some outdated information. On finance, we... I wanted to make a note that Finance Manager Melissa Archison has started on Monday, and we have really wanted to welcome her, and our Finance Director, Emily Conrad, will do that at some point. And the Finance Department, as everybody is aware, has been working through the challenges to move business licensing and TOT transition back in-house, and the volume is pretty high, but we're working through the technology challenges and workflow challenges. And there's a flyer and then to your left, and that's... You can click that, and if you need the help, you can call City Hall, somebody can help you. Also, we have been preparing the new budget for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. The draft budget is now available on the city website. Despite the shortage of staff, Finance Director, she worked diligently to get the draft budget out as of last Friday, so check it out, it's on website, and that's great news. And Fire Department have had their seasonal firefighters has start... It's going to start next week, and that's a great program that Fire Department had been implementing for years, and the seasonal firefighters also help to help the Public Works Department do some painting on fire hydrants and so on and so forth, so that's very, very helpful. And also want to just quickly talk about a couple of projects that kind of critical, it's on a federal level and regional level. As we all know, now facing the federal administration's change and the change on personnel, and then the orders, and we... The FEMA, we have some FEMA claims still pending, so we reach out to our federal lobbyists to make sure that our claims are not being dropped. And so, basically, the response was saying that nothing is being held up unless the grants in question are within a very narrow area. And so, our federal lobbyists and city staff are continuing monitoring these claims and making sure that we're getting the money that we are eligible for, and those... I also listed these, the numbers of the claims. And the other project that we work collaboratively with a few agencies, mainly led by the county, is a study regarding offshore wind, called Facilities Feasibility Study. That study is still going on. The project started on December 2024. To date, the staff are still collecting information and identifying potential constraints. And so, this project is led by the county through a grant, and we... City, Port San Luis, and Cal Poly are the participants in this one. This slide, I wanted to talk about it because we have received a lot of calls. I know council members received calls last week. This is when City's Utility Division drained the King's Water Tank, and you can see the water flow down. Unfortunately, those are... They are... They cannot be captured, and they are the last few bottom of the water tank. And they are from there, so it's not portable, it's not safe to drink, and we unfortunately do not have a distribution system connected to the nearby golf course, which we can communicate with State Park to see, perhaps have some other creative ways to capture the unwanted water at some point near future. This is really a routine maintenance, and we captured as much as possible water we could, but the bottom few feet could not be captured, so that's falling down. I apologize for inconvenience in the neighborhood, but I want to point out always well. And Mayor spoke about the Kite Festival. I just put some numbers... I, I just put some numbers in there. I get the same information Mayor has shared. These are really amazing members, numbers, and from the coverage perspective. Also, I wanted to point out that originally, before the festival, the organizer was concerned about circulation, and our police chief, she took upon herself and come up with a plan with volunteers to chalk up the parking lot, and also volunteer direct, to help the traffic virtual park at the parking lot, and that worked very well. There was no congestion, just times. So I want to say thank you to Police Chief and the volunteers. And of course, visit Morro Bay for all they have done to make this amazing event happen. As Mayor stated, we have this Thursday, this, this is upcoming event, and there's, everybody is welcome to attend. And then dredging, as Mayor stated, there's a picture of the dredging boat, and it's already out there, and the picture to the right marked the, the area that will be dredged. Not everything, but the area B, F, hopefully they'll be able to get to it. And lastly, it's always something going on in, in our, by our harbor, and Morro Bay Parade, that's just one of the city tradition, Recreation Service Office put this together, so it's going to be happening on Saturday, and they have to share with Harbor Department's Open House and the Safe Boating Day events all together in the same, same time. And, and a reminder, the lifeguard's going to start very soon, Memorial Day through the first weekend in October. So there's going to be more, tours, more people in our beloved city. Last, my last slide, I just wanted to point some, point out some of the subjects that the, of major interest, and it's a preview of city, city council, city council meeting agenda. May 27th, we're gonna, tentatively had these, the roundabout discussion directed at the city council meeting on April 22nd, and then also the fire zone, just, we're gonna talk about fire zone severity map ordinance. And then the budget, special budget study session is going to be on Wednesday, May 28th, and then the June 24th is regular, at a regular city council meeting, the budget is set to be adopted. So all these are, are public meetings, and, and I, everybody's welcome to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. I appreciate it. There's a lot going on, and I would be remiss right now, I did not do a shout out to one of our greatest events, which was the Morro Bay Car Show, Friday Night Cruise, and thousands and thousands of people, well done by the Car Show Committee, and all those who volunteered for it, Police Department Rotary, everybody who participated in. And a shout out to Sean Farmer for all his hard work each year on the Kite Festival. With that, we will move on to subcommittee reports, and I will turn it over, Mr. Singwald.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Airline Singwald, Community Development Director. I do not have a subcommittee report for offshore wind or the Morro Bay Power Plant, and I believe council members, Landerman LaFaye already gave a report during council member reports on the Morro Elementary School Subcommittee, so no further information to report on this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. With that, I will move on to our resolutions, our proclamations, excuse me, this evening. We have three proclamations recognizing our local public safety. So I'm going to start with the first one, which is proclamation of the City of Morro Bay declaring National Safe Boating Week. Whereas the City of Morro Bay is home to a vibrant boating community that values the enjoyment, recreation, commercial fishing and livelihood that our waterways provide, and that whereas National Safe Boating Week held May 17th to 23rd serves as the annual kickoff of Safe Boating Campaign, a global awareness effort to promote responsible boating practices and encourage all boaters to prioritize safety. Whereas the National Safe Boating Council, a nonprofit organization dedicated to advancing safe boating through education and outreach, reminds all boaters to inspect their safety equipment, provide comfortable U.S. Coast Guard approved life jackets for every passenger, and commit to wearing life jackets at all times in the water. Whereas U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that drowning is the leading cause of death in recreational boating fatalities, with 87% of drowning victims not wearing life jackets at the time of the incident. Whereas proper preparation, including taking a safe boating course, scheduling a vessel safety check, making a float plan, wearing life jackets, using an engine cutoff switch, watching the weather, maintaining a proper lookout, traveling at safe speeds, avoiding boating under the influence, and keeping reliable communication devices can help prevent accidents and save lives. Whereas the Morro Bay Harbor Patrol plays a critical role in promoting boating safety by providing education, free life jackets, and facilitating safe boating practices within our local waters. Whereas the Safe Boating Campaign and National Safe Boating Council provide a valuable resource to support local boating safety efforts and promote a culture of safe, responsible boating. Now therefore be it resolved that the City, Morro Bay, Morro Bay City Council does hereby recognize May 17th to the 23rd, 2025 as National Safe Boating Week, and encourages all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear life jackets at all times while boating. And I'd like to invite our members from our Harbor Department up.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, and just wanted to encourage you as well to come out this Saturday to the Harbor Department, 1275 Embark Darrow. We do have National Safe Boating Day, and it's an open house on our dock. We will be providing information, life jacket trade-ins, the Fish and Wildlife Wardens will be there as well, as long, as well as the Coast Guard Auxiliary and Sheriff Department as well with their boat. Look forward to seeing you then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next proclamation is for declaring the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. Whereas the Emergency Medical Services System consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it is appropriate, where it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Morro Bay, Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 51st anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, We Care For Everyone. And with that, I would invite our first responders back there up, or the Fire Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this recognition of Emergency Medical Services here in the city. This year marks the 51st anniversary of EMS Week, established in 1974 by President Gerald Ford. This year's EMS Week is May 18th to the 24th, and the theme is We Care For Everyone. This theme is intended to recognize the contributions of EMS Providers as part of the complete healthcare system, and a reminder that EMS Professionals provide exceptional care to all people regardless of their situation. Here in Morro Bay, emergency medical responses account for about 70% of our EMS calls. I would like to thank my team and their dedication and service to the community, and I would like to thank the Mayor and Council Members for taking this opportunity to recognize the critical role in the community that the, these providers provide.
Thank you. And next, I would like to recognize the Public Works Week, May 18th to 24th, People, Purpose and Presence. Whereas the Public Works Professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Morro Bay. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works Professionals, who are federally mandated first responders, and the engineers, managers, utility workers, maintenance workers, leads, analysts, operators, and staff report, staff support at all levels of government, and our private sector partners who are responsible for rebuilding, maintaining, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Waste water systems, public buildings, parks, streets, sidewalks, storm drains, bikeways, street trees, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leader, and children in the City of Morro Bay to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works First Responders and Public Works Programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas the women and men comprising of the Public Works Department in the City of Morro Bay are dedicated to building, maintaining, and beautifying our critical infrastructures in the service of improvements in quality of life for Morro Bay residents and visitors through projects such as the Water Reclamation Facility Program, which will provide long-term water supply resiliency, and street paving, which will provide safe driving surfaces and extend the life of the city's street infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Morro Bay City Council does hereby designate the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. Urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Mr. Colick?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council for the recognition and the appreciation on behalf of the 37 professionals that work in public works for the city. We thank you. And we'll be at the Slow Farmers Market on May 22nd with some trucks out there, so come see us.
Thank you, Mr. Colick. I miss the costumes this year. Thank you. With that, we're moving to public comment. Again, I will remind you all, I have a stack of speaker slips. I'm asking for two minutes. Anyone who can do it in less, these are for items not on the agenda. I would remind you that the roundabout is not on this week's agenda, it's on in two weeks. And also, I'm going to give about 45 minutes dedicated to general public comment, and if there are still speaker slips, I'm going to hold those till the end of the meeting, and we will resume public comment then. With that, first up, I will call three at a time and ask you to come up as quick as possible, Chuck Stroll, Tim Cowan, and Jane Heath.
Good evening, good evening. Chuck Stroll, Morro Bay, President, presently the President of the Lions Club. Just wanted to address a couple of things. I put on my slip, I think, thank you. I want to thank, first of all, the city. They've done a spectacular job in allowing us to serve our Monday night dinners right here in this room. I think we're serving now over 30,000 meals over the last 10 years, and we also have served, I think, about 80 to 100 meals each evening. We also have food and, and clothes. Linda Winters and her team have provided clothes, clean clothes for just about anybody and everybody. I'd like to also thank the city for allowing the Lions Club to put on the Thanksgiving Community Dinner each year. It's a lot of work for, for the city and for all the volunteers, and we have probably 60 every year that we've had to use. And the same thing is true with the Monday night dinners here. It's not just Lions, it's a lot of volunteers, and we really do appreciate that. Can't, can't forget though to thank the maintenance people. Greg, this is your Bailey Wick right here. All the, all the people who make it possible for us to use this facility and to maintain it. Josh and JR and Brandon, who are the primary people responsible for maintaining this. Last but not least, I just wanted to, I wanted to emphasize something that's very important to this city, and that is our Chamber of Commerce. Saturday night, this coming Saturday night, we're going to have a gala once again, and it's a very eventful evening, and it's, I'm very proud to say that the Lions Club have participated in this for many years, and I know that my time's run out, but I'll join you next week. Oh, one last thing. I want to remind you that Lost at Sea service on Memorial Day out at Cayucus, this is a, this is, this is a really good, is that on the thing? Okay. I just want to emphasize that everybody's welcome, and please take, and there'll be some flyers on the back table.
Thank you, Mr. Stroll.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and City Council and staff, for the opportunity to share my thoughts. My name is Tim Cowan. I've been a resident of Morro Bay for 47 years, grown up here, and am a local business owner for over 20 years, as well as a property and homeowner. I'd like to briefly comment on the city's ED Economic Development Contract with the Chamber of Commerce. I respectfully ask that you would thoughtfully consider the significant value this contract brings to our business community. As a small business owner, I along with many others deeply appreciate your long-term support for Morro Bay Business through this essential partnership. In my view, the city has demonstrated wise stewardship of SB 1090 funds and other resources by partnering with the Chamber for Economic Development. This partnership not only enhances strategic growth, but also supports our local small businesses through the city's primary resource and advocate for small business, the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you again for your ongoing support and thoughtful consideration. I respectfully urge you not only to renew the ED contract, but to consider increasing your annual commitment to the Chamber, and by extension, to the small business community of Morro Bay. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tim. Jane Heath, no clapping, please, thank you. You can wave your hands, thank you. It'll go faster. Jane, followed by Felipe Gonzalez, followed by John, let's get to him. Thank you, Ms. Heath.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name's Jane Heath, I'm a resident and business owner in Morro Bay. After speaking in favor of completing the environmental study at the April 22nd meeting regarding the Highway 41 Main Street project, I've personally heard from scores of my Morro Bay neighbors who are upset that such an important council decision was being reversed without adequate opportunity to be heard by the largest number of citizens. Many have urged one or more of the majority to simply change their vote and allow the process to proceed to public comment and, and on to design. You apparently elected not to do that. I've been told the item is on the May 27th agenda, and we understand from Caltrans that there is a narrow time window to take full advantage of the, of the CAPM program, which happens only once every 20 to 25 years. Whatever you do, please do not allow that window to close. Meantime, you should at least direct staff to resume work immediately pending the final action so that time is not lost. If the council delays its further action and loses this opportunity due to lack of timely action, voters will remember that. Please act promptly so we Please act promptly so we all have the opportunity to speak directly to Caltrans to get this dangerous intersection fixed and the best possible project available. And I would urge my neighbors to please communicate with council and come out to the May 27th meeting so that you can be heard on this important issue. Thank you.
You're after, John. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Felipe Gonzalez, and I'm a foster care recruiter for the San Luis Obispo County Department of Social Services. I'd like to begin by thanking the Morro Bay City Council for presenting the Department of Social Services with a National Foster Care Month proclamation as part of today's meeting. During the month of May, we are incredibly proud to honor all of our county's resource and adoptive families, as well as all county staff and community partners that support these families. Foster care is a critical safety net for any community. When a child's home environment is deemed unsafe, they may be placed with a resource family, which could be a relative, a non-related extended family member, or a certified community-based resource family home. These resource families provide a safe, caring, and stable home environment while a child's biological family works towards reunification. Resource families are an essential component of our ability to care for youth in foster care. Unfortunately, like many counties across the state, we're experiencing a severe shortage of resource families. So last May, the Department of Social Services launched the 7525 Initiative with a goal of developing 75 new community-based resource family homes by the end of 2025. This includes 25 homes for teens, 25 homes for school-aged youth ages 6 to 12, 15 homes for children ages 0 to 5, seven emergency foster care homes, and three shelter homes. Currently, we have secured 35% of our overall goal, but need this community's support to reach our goal by year's end. If successful, this initiative will transform our ability to provide better placement matches for youth in care, support existing resource families, and strengthen our overall foster care system. We are calling on the entire county of San Luis Obispo community to rally behind this effort. We encourage interested individuals to attend one of our bi-monthly virtual informational meetings to learn more about how they can help by calling 805-781-1705, or visiting our website, www.slowfostercare.com. Lastly, we just want to thank you for honoring May as National Foster Care Month here in Morro Bay. Thank you so much.
I'm going to ask you again, please not to clap, please just wave your hands in support. It's disruptive, and the meeting will slow down. We have a lot of speakers tonight. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council. My name is John, co-creator of Let's Get Tuned Sound and Yoga Studio in Morro Bay here. Hello to everyone here today as well. I'm just here to give a little update of what we've been up to. A lot of good news, and I think it's going to be really perfect for today anyways. There's a lot of energy here in the room, and we've created this beautiful space over the last 20 months of just a place of acceptance for all. We've been able to attract people from all over the county here to Morro Bay with our wellness services, and I get so nervous up here. I got it all right here, and I can't remember any of it. But just to just thank you guys for letting us be in that building. We've had a really good time, and what's really cool about our studio is that we have every imaginable person you can think of in their practicing on their personal wellness, on their physical health, their spiritual health, their mental health. I have people from Cal Poly practicing next to a woman sitting in a chair, because that's all that she could do, all in the same room together. We have a studio that has a room of people with different political views and religious views, but it's so cool what we've created there. And through that, we've been able to attract people not just from around the county, but now around the country and around the globe. And we've also been beautifying the building, so if no one's been there yet to see the beautiful murals that are on the side of the building, the butterflies and all that other stuff, I just want to invite everyone out. Thank you guys for letting us be there, and I hope to see more people there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I have Kieran, followed by Shush Krotzer, followed by Ray Reardon. Thank you.
Hello again. So let's see if I can make this quick and have you actually understand what I mean and why this is your problem. I'm really happy this time change. I know it messes some people up, but I really like it because it's finally, you know, sunny out when I'm coming out here. And for one thing, that means it's usually warm enough. I get to wear just whatever I want. It's comfortable. I don't have to dress warmly. And in fact, this is the first time since this summer that I've actually worn a full-length dress. And one of the reasons for this is because the last time I did this, I was out walking around Morro Bay as I do, you know, nice weather, nice town, nice people. I like to just walk around, meet people, look at things. And I passed a group of very, very small children on the side of the road, and just out of nowhere, they start making fun of me and telling me how disgusting I am and how a man shouldn't wear a dress. And mind you, these children, they're very, 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 very small, like six or something, I don't know. And the thing is, seriously, at that age, like they don't, I don't know what they're doing, you know, kids, they just, they see people doing things, they hear people saying things, they hear the way that people talk about things, and they start trying these things out. They see, how does it feel coming out of my mouth? How does it feel getting, you know, these reactions from people? So it was up to me in that moment to decide, how do I respond to this in a way that they're going to carry through moving forwards in their lives so that when they're my age or when they're your age, they're not necessarily going to remember this incident, but there's going to be a lesson here? So the thing that I do is just, you know, I don't completely ignore it, I just stop these numbers, and then I just keep going. They recognize that I heard them, they recognize I decided to ignore it. Sometimes people come up here and they talk about how much they love the support that you've given them, like small business owners. And these sometimes are people that I've interacted with and found are shockingly disrespectful people, maybe not to you, but to others.
Thank you, Kieran. Shush, followed by Ray, followed by Linda Winters.
Hi, I'm Shush Krotzer. We've been living here a long time, and my husband was on the City Council for eight years, and the roundabout was discussed then. We're talking decades and decades ago. And most recently, we were very disheartened to hear that it was, the work on it was stopped temporarily, we hope. And I was at Jeff Echols Zoom meeting, which was lovely, thank you very much for doing that. But what you didn't mention was, I think about 80% of the people at that meeting were in favor of continuing the roundabout, and the same with Saturday. So there was an overwhelmingly positive encouragement for you to continue work on the roundabout. And one thing that was mentioned during the discussions was, where are the alternatives? And where's the information? And this is going to be, we want to save our children. Well, roundabouts have existed for thousands of years, hundreds of years everywhere around the world. There's so much data, and it's proven, even in the newspaper article from the Tribune, 40% safer for pedestrians is the data that says roundabouts are very practical and will save our children, not hurt them. We are taking risks and have for way too long. The fact that Caltrans has given the money, and SlowCog has given the money, and the process is moving forward, the reason you don't see alternatives is we're way beyond that stage. Those have been discussed and written about. There's pages and pages of alternatives that were discussed years and years ago. So I'm hoping that next, on the 27th, you'll reconsider and move forward with the project. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, and our great city staff. I'm Ray Reardon. I'm 70 years old. I've worked for 50 years, and I've been, was a business owner for 25 of them. And I've been in 10 different chambers of commerce, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the Chamber of Commerce today. So I have served in the Morro Bay Chamber since 2022. I've held numerous positions, including board chair, vice chair, and currently the president of the Chamber's foundation. During my tenure, we had to navigate some rough waters with Erica's departure and the inability to fill that position in a timely manner. I believe that delay and succession truly hurt us in the eyes of some of the council and some of the community. We had to work through some incorrect assumptions regarding the Chamber's future, we had to reconcile some personal misunderstandings, we had to deal with how difficult it was to replace a quality leader like Erica. I sincerely hope that none of you lost faith in us at that time, but if so, I personally apologize. All that said, in the interim period prior to Deena's arrival, we executed every planned and unplanned chamber and community event, every ribbon cutting, every mixer, every sip and stroll, every breakfast down the bay, parades, summits, our annual galas, awarded thousands of dollars in Morro Bay High School scholarships, and we still handled every business and community inquiry that came in. I am one of a dozen board members, and speaking only for myself, I have personally visited over half of our 300 businesses. I've volunteered hundreds of hours, donated my music, my guitars, and financially to dozens of community events. We're now fully staffed. We have Deena, a true executive leadership mind at our helm. We have Lindsay and Jody as our small but mighty staff. We are also blessed with one of the most dynamic board of directors and experienced board chair and charries that I've had the pleasure to serve with. I believe I speak for our entire team when I share that we have a commitment to our entire community and not just the businesses. We intend to be a true partner to the city and prove our valuable, our value with tangible evidence. In closing, the Chamber is not just good for businesses, it's good for the community. We live here, we shop here, we eat here, some of us work here. We are the community. Please consider all the good that the Chamber and the city can do together with your continued support, and hopefully more. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Winters, followed by Carol Swain.
Good evening. I am going to keep this brief. I'm Linda Winters, 31-year resident in the same mobile home park in, right here in Morro Bay. First off, belated Happy Mother's Day to everyone. I know you all have mothers, and I hope you treated them well. Last night, we had a wonderful showing of the Monday Night Dinner. Thank you, Chuck, for the kudos. Some of you may not know these names that I'm mentioning that showed up for Monday Night Dinner. June Cleaver and Harriet Nelson showed up for, and for those of you who don't know, ask somebody that's a whole lot older. They came for Monday Night Dinners, and they were an integral part of it all. I also need to acknowledge Public Works. They've been wonderfully helpful to us as far as the Monday Night Dinners are concerned, and we hope that we get to keep this venue for a long, long time. And one more question. Chief Amy, how do I get an appointment with Rocky? See y'all next.
Thank you, Linda. After Carol is Anthony Mitchell, followed by Jamie Irons.
Mayor, council, staff, thanks for having us. I'm going to make this really quick and say, regarding the roundabout, I hope that your discussion between now and the 27th and on the 27th leads to a really careful decision about it. It's really important. It's important for the safety. I really have to shout out to Jeff Echols for the really great way that he handled the two town halls, the one that I attended especially. And again, I think that the roundabout is a great improvement to the city, not just, not just with safety, which that obviously is job one, but also an opportunity to modernize and beautify that really important welcoming entrance to our city. It could really magnify the businesses on Main Street and connect it more with the shoreline and make it just as special as the rest of the town. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. My name is Anthony Mitchell. I am the managing director of a company called Echo Green Solutions. We are a federally recognized Department of Energy, energy services company and a trade professional with Pacific Gas Electric Company. I'm here today to talk to you about a couple of things. One is rising electricity costs. It's supposed to increase by about 25% this next year. We're a third party, we have nothing to do with that, but just want to let you know that those are coming. And then there's this massive mandate of EV charging and the EV infrastructure costs that the cities are now bearing. And so I'm here to talk about a program that we represent. There's funds that are available through the federal government, and there's funds available through the local utility company. We can come in with no budget impact, no money out of pocket for not only the city, but also the city businesses to help the city lower your electricity costs, lower your carbon footprint, and use other people's money, such as program money from either the federal government, the state, or the utility company, to upgrade the city and the infrastructure requirements that are being burdened on the city for, for instance, EV infrastructure. EV vehicles are here to stay, there's a ton of future in that. We've got funds available to help the city spend those funds versus your funds that you guys probably need more money to operate and do more things within city properties. So we have funds available to the city, no budget impact, no money out of pocket. We've already done this with the Questa Community College District. We've got them about $3 million of these funds to upgrade that college. San Luis Obispo, we've done their parking garages. Atascadero Unified School District, we did three phases with them, upgraded all kinds of stuff for the school district. As you go south, there's a whole bunch of stuff down that way, and as you go that way, all the way to Los Banos, even to the Sierras, we do about 100 different municipal projects a year through these funds. So we've got a ton of references, and we've done about 2,000 agencies for the state of California. So I'm just here to let you guys know that we have those funds available. We would love to schedule just an informative time to meet with whoever in the city would deem the responsible party to use these dollars and for the businesses. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Jamie Irons, followed by Colby Krotzer and Courtney Shepler.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Colby Krotzer, 35-year resident. In my first term sitting up there on the City Council, the issue of the roundabout or oval at the Highway 41 Main Street intersection came before the council. And at that time, the reason that there was only one general proposal being recommended by Caltrans was that all the other alternatives had been considered and basically rejected as too expensive, unfeasible, or simply not as safe as the one, which is very similar to the present one before the council still at the moment. Our Brown Act public meetings requirements require you to take public comment, that is provide a forum. And to see Councilmember Echols go beyond that, to have town hall meetings, two of them, I attended both, is a real credit to giving the, at least the appearance of caring about what your constituents care for. I mean it that way. It's, you're hard to read, Jeff, but I won't address you personally anymore, sorry. The basic rule is that public expenditure of resources and decisions affecting the general community should have an opportunity for the citizens that are affected by those decisions to be first aware of them, and then to have some opportunity to speak to them. There's no requirement because you're sitting up there to actually hear or to act on what your constituents care for. That's really a matter of elections. I had to knock on every door in town several times to get elected to the city. And this is a small enough town, it's actually feasible, takes you through Halloween, not fun, but it's, it is eliciting. You do learn something, and you rarely get the door slammed in your face, so I hope that you actually listen this time and continue with this roundabout project. It's important to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Colby. Courtney Shepler, followed by Saban Gray.
Good evening, Courtney Shepler. I wanted to follow up as well on the roundabout topic and just point out that in 2023, there was significant public meetings, public comments. There, I read through hundreds of pages of information and feedback that was gathered during that time. The majority of the responses, both survey and in writing, were in favor of the roundabout. And I want to contrast that with what happened on April 22nd, which is with kind of a sleight of hand almost. There were several There were several of you that just tried to kill the project, stop it in its tracks at that moment. I know you've heard a lot since then, and Jeff, thank you for those meetings that you held. But I want to ask one more time. In leadership, we have different learning opportunities. One is, we've got to do as much listening as we do talking, maybe even more listening. And two, when we've made a mistake, that we own it, and we admit the mistake, and we try to fix it if we still can. I'm asking that in tonight's meeting, can you please reconsider your vote on April 22nd, raise it, and undo that decision that was made, allow the environmental study to proceed instead of having staff stop work on it? So will one of the three of you that voted to stop work have the courage to admit that mistake and that you didn't do enough listening tonight? Thank you.
My name is Saban Gray, and I stand before you as a resident and former local business owner. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of myself only, and for full disclosure, I am also a part-time employee of our mayor, Carla Wixom. It was difficult for me growing up as a gay person in Visalia, California. I fully came out while attending college at Cal State Fullerton in the late 70s. After graduation, I eventually moved to West Hollywood, where I found many like-minded folks. It became my Camelot for the next 30 years. I was a founding member of their Cultural Heritage Advisory Board and served on its board for 13 years, so I'm very experienced with local government and their procedures. Now I'm retired senior living here in beautiful Morro Bay. While serving on their board in West Hollywood, I was surrounded by rainbow imagery all over town, which demonstrated their commitment to diversity and for making everyone feel welcomed. Even the city's police cars had rainbows on it. One of my proudest moments in life was when the White House was lit up in a bright rainbow colors to celebrate the passage of the Same-Sex Marriage Act in 2015. We, as a nation, had indeed come a long way. Recently, I was so happy to see that the conservative cities of Boise, Idaho, and Salt Lake City, Utah, had both passed motions to make the rainbow flag an official state flag. Imagine my shock and dismay to learn that here in my hometown, this is not the case. I fully understand the city's intention by initiating this motion was not to make residents feel uncomfortable or to offend those who view that flying this flag over the city's building is divisive, sorry, but that is not the case. What the council has proposed here is actually more divisive and offensive to all the rest of us. In the past, the city's openly gay tourism board member reached out to the community to bring more tourists to our town. This curse motion is contrary to all of his progressive efforts. I hope that those of us who identify as part of the LGB community and are Alani's will not have to wait until Governor Newsom does the same thing here in California, makes the rainbow flag an official flag. If this motion passes, it'll give a bad look for our city and discourage tourism, which is what we need to thrive on. Thank you.
Next up, I have Andrea Luker, followed by Walter Heath, followed by Ashley Goldlist.
Good evening, Andrea Luker. I'm a board member of React Alliance. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan, 501(c)(3) organization, and we've been working for the last couple of years on educating the public about the impacts to offshore wind. Tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about feasibility studies that are occurring in our ports. We know there's one happening here in Morro Bay, but in my opinion, it's unlikely that Morro Bay will be an operations and maintenance port. But the likelihood of Port San Luis and thus being industrialized for operations and maintenance is very possible, partly due to their port design and also due to their elected board of commissioners who continue to agree to further studies. Port San Luis is engaged in a study with Mott MacDonald, as Morro Bay is. Port San Luis has also engaged Clean Energy Terminals to do a feasibility study, and that's expected next month. And they are also about ready to approve a third feasibility study funded by the California Energy Commission to the tune of $3 million. In that grant proposal to the CEC, the description of the project includes, quote, "The project is designed to mature." We know what that means, move ahead. "The operations and maintenance terminals engineering design and prepare the project for future development phases." Again, as a longtime grant writer and former grant writing instructor at Cal Poly, the word mature used in a grant clearly means to move forward. You're probably now thinking into my speech that why am I talking about Port San Luis to the city of Morro Bay? And it's because if Port San Luis is industrialized, it means that really our entire coastline is going to be industrialized with 300 offshore wind turbines, increased vessel traffic, degradation of the marine environment, hits to commercial and recreational fishing, and many other impacts. So React's ask tonight is to you as Morro Bay residents, residents, and anybody that's listening, to stay engaged, to keep track of what's happening in our county in regard to offshore wind. This, I'll finish, I'll wrap it up. This proposed industrialization of our coastline is disgusting, and it certainly is at odds with the Coastal Act, whose job is to protect and preserve coastal resources. Thank you.
Walter Heath of Morro Bay. It's been almost two years since a previous council voted to participate in the Highway 41 Roundabout Project. The current city council has received briefings on the progress of the project, yet there have been no public meetings dedicated to review and discussion of this important infrastructure project. It's customary for the public as stakeholders to be brought along, but we have been left behind. And most recently, we had no choice but to inform every resident in three days through a hastily arranged door-to-door effort. I'm disappointed with the lack of leadership on this matter and the cynical vote to retrospectively disapprove of funding that was previously allocated and actually spent. The sole purpose of this ruse was to instruct staff to stop working on the draft environmental document that is 96% complete. So I'd like an explanation why our city staff cannot get back to work immediately on the draft environmental document for the proposed Highway 41 Roundabout Project. Why are we waiting for a May 27th vote that would end our city's participation in the project and has that kind of negative cast to it? And it's like you almost have to like vote against it in order to vote for it. It doesn't make any sense. You can get this done tonight, and I hope you get it done. In my remaining time, I just want to say that, you know, in my role here in the community, I get to speak to high school groups frequently, Interact Club, ASB Leadership at the high school, and, and, and the Interact Club every third Saturday comes and gardens with us. Our students at Morro Bay High School are brilliant. This generation of students are brilliant. They, they're, they carry a reference librarian in their pocket, they, they have, you know, a collaborative way of looking at things. And I, I challenge each of you, next meeting, to come, to cite one example of working with students to rebut some of the nasty things that have been said in this room. I'm, I'm, really, I'm seriously offended by it. I felt gutted by it. And one of the ways you can correct this is by citing some examples of you working with high school students where you've had positive experiences. Thanks.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ashley Goldlist. I am a homeowner here. I'm 33 years old. I know I'm in the minority. I also am a air pollution specialist, and I'm a former air quality specialist as well. And I also have six years of experience as a transportation planner in both San Joaquin County, and I served on the Technical Transportation Advisory Council for San Luis Obispo County for the past two years. So I've been involved with this study for a while, and I would really, well, yeah, I would say that I'm very well-versed in transportation programming and sustainability. I am here to urge you to reconsider the, the no vote. It's, I, I've been a planner for eight years, and I don't know if I've ever seen a study just not get finished at like the very end. It seems like a lot of wasted time and effort, and the final, you know, four, four or five percent is just giving the recommendations. And I don't see how that, it doesn't even mean we're going to go through with this, with the next phases of the study. So I don't see how, you know, not seeing the outcome of this report would hurt any of us. But I do know that, for example, yesterday, my partner and I were walking, we have a 13-year-old Doberman, three legs. We were trying to cross the intersection. We could not get through there. Somebody came out in front of us and behind us. This is, it was unacceptable, and I always feel dangerous, or I feel, yeah, super dangerous trying to cross there. I also urge you to consider that in the next, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years, we're going to have more and more tourism here, and there's going to be more people, and as it is, we can't get through that intersection, so. Yeah.
I have no more speaker slips. Public comment is open for items not on the agenda. Two minutes, please, and we have about another 10 minutes of time left. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, City Staff. Judy Setti, 58-year resident. And I just, I just want to say that our youth in Morro Bay are so very important. And one of the, the main reason that the roundabout was held up was because we just aren't sure that the safety is there with the current plan. So I had a little idea, and I don't know if you guys can pull it off, but what if you had 150 students show up at the roundabout up at Morro Bay Boulevard and simulate what it's like to go for lunch? And just go around that roundabout, just like if you were going to lunch, start at Quintana, go over to Mobile, the Mobile, go on around and see if it backs up traffic, see if it causes any problems, see if the students stop and let traffic go by. I don't, I think they have the right of way, so I don't think they have to. You could also include some teen drivers and have them driving through and, you know, just see if they're going to yield and just try to do something to show if that's the safest way to go. And money is another factor, and we do have an alternative of putting stoplights and beautifying that intersection and bringing it up to ADA code. So I commend you for how guarded you all are being in the research that you're doing for this project.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mandy Davis, President of React Alliance. Andrea Luker has already indicated to you who we are, what we are about, and one of the main things that we are about is educating the public on the impacts of offshore wind, not just to our oceans, not just to the ecosystems, but most especially right now to our communities. We have made numerous educational presentations all over the county, including you guys. And part of that process has been having events, fundraisers. We've had forums, that we have had great people speaking at them. So, you know, our public has been, is, is better educated. So part of that process is, about a year and a half ago, we had an event called Save Our Seas. It was right here, it was great, it was lovely, we had music, we educated people. We're going to have another one coming up this summer. And as evidenced by what's going on with, what, what we have to do with offshore wind, it is more focused on our coastal communities, on what's happening on shore, and it's called Save Our Coast. It is on July 26th. It will be at Tylenol's Park, and the focus will be celebrating our coastal community. A lot of people think that we just fight against something. No, there's a really big difference in fighting against something and fighting for something. We are fighting for our community, we're fighting for our oceans. We are fire eating to educate the public on the negative impacts of offshore wind. So I invite all of you, we'll have all kinds of marketing materials out, to come to our event on July 26th, Tylenol's Park, starts at 1:00. Zongo All-Stars, Jill Knight. See you there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nick Heistorf. I am a project manager with the California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans.
I'm Michael O'Yee, Environmental Coordinator, working with Nick.
Two years ago, the department completed a project on Highway 1 at Toro Creek. We replaced a bridge at that location. Next year, we are scheduled to replace the bridge in the southbound direction, and so I would just like to take this opportunity to let everybody know that next Thursday in this building, we will be holding an open house for an opportunity to come and learn more about the project. And so that will be between 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM that evening, and it'll be an informative meeting, and your questions can be addressed at that time. Thank you.
Where's the meeting at?
It'll be right here in this building.
Oh, thank you.
And I'd like to add that we'll also be advertising this through our social media on the project website, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peggy Rogers, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm just here to request that you please keep the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce in your budget. We were brand-new business owners, opened our business here seven years ago, and we're residents here too. And being a brand-new business owner, we had no idea what to do, where to go, and we have never let our membership lapse with the Chamber. They've been an integral part of keeping us engaged with the community, and I just value them tremendously, Dave and I both do, and I would just ask that you please keep them within the budget. I think they're a valuable asset to the community and to small business. Thank you.
Thank you. And based on our time, these will be the last three speakers for public comment on items not on the agenda. We will resume items not on the agenda, public comment at the end of the evening tonight. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Nicole Dorfman, Morro Bay resident. I'm going to piggyback on a couple of things that have been said. First is my colleagues with React Alliance, I am also on the board of React Alliance, and for that, I need to speak a little bit to the Chamber issue. I'm sorry I'm not able to stay. And React is a member of the Chamber, and I think they do actually wonderful things for the local business community. However, I am really conflicted, as is the Chamber, because as, as you know, they also have a government affairs committee where they actually lobby the legislature. And one of the things that they are, their priorities is that they believe that the Vistra property should be designated to store energy for wind operations, energy transmission, energy production, and general industrial uses. And it just so happens that both Vistra and Evenkeel Wind are some of their biggest donors, and their GAC, their mission, among other things, is to recommend policies and actions that serve the economic interests of their members. And no problem there, except that if Morro Bay is funding them, they're, they're actually working against what the people of Morro Bay have clearly stated in the A24 vote, that they, they don't want this area industrialized. So if the city is funding the Chamber, then they're funding the Chamber to work against the interests, partly, to partly work against the interests of the people. So I'm really conflicted in that, and I hope you guys find a way to work that out. What I've been told in the past, I think last year when the money came, was the same conversation, was that none of the money from the city goes towards the GAC. However, unless they're meeting in a different location, that's not in the, the building that's funded by the city, I'm not quite sure how that happened. So my suggestion would be to stop lobbying and then to take our money and use it for the best interests of our town and never to work against the interests of our council and the people. So thank you for your consideration on that.
My name is Dawn Beatty, and I live in Morro Bay. I have a few graves, and some of you up there took my thunder away. I wanted to let Public Works know how great the streets look. She did a pretty, really good job on that. And also, thank you, Councilmember Lynn, for your comments on, or presenting your comments, if you will, on the Morro Bay Roundabout. I was going to say, I thought it looked great. I thought Morro Bay Blue did a really nice job with that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is I wanted to add my support for the Main Street, Highway 41 Roundabout, and ask each of the council members who voted not to proceed with the environmental the environmental plan study to rethink your vote. Anyway, thank you for all you do.
I'm not sure if my opinion will be valued here today. Good evening. I love gay people. I love black people. I love soldiers who have died for us. I love autistic humans. I love humans with type 1 diabetes. I love black people. I might have already said that. My point is, I believe that our American flag encompasses all of us. And, like I said, my belief might not be popular, but I believe that that American flag shines for all of us and encompasses all of us. And if we exclusively pick one flag over another flag, then we're discounting that. And I feel like it's time for all of us to stand up and fly the American flag to exude everyone and encompass everyone. And the fact that there are political venues that choose to take that flag and act like the rest of us don't matter, it's for us to stand up for and fight for. So I fight for an exclusive American flag to be flown in our town to encompass everyone. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. I will be closing public comment, general public comment, and I will open it back up at the end of the meeting if anyone did not have an opportunity to speak on items not on the agenda. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, items 7A through 7J. I have speaker slips to start with. Again, it will be two minutes. I will start with the speaker.
Madam Mayor, there is a raised hand on Zoom still for public comment.
Oh, are there any raised hands?
Yeah, I have a couple right now. Just one, one moment. All right, Michael, I am going to allow you to talk now. Michael, you should be able to talk.
Hello, everyone. Michael Wumblett here, Executive Director for Visit Morro Bay. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council and Staff. Good to be here with you today. Sorry I am not available to be there in person. I did have a prior commitment. First off, I want to thank Police Chief Watkins and Becca Kelly from the Harbor Department for the support during Kite Festival. It was a truly amazing event this year, and our volunteers from the Walter Heath Group of Morro Bay at Bloom, and from Cal Poly. And thank you, Mayor and City Manager Kimball, for the updates on the Kite Festival. Our marketing this year was truly off the charts, with earned media, which means not paid, equalling about $3 million in value. It was truly, truly amazing this year. I am also speaking today on business item 9A, Economic Development Contract, for the proposal for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I take this as a lens on the tourism economy of Morro Bay. There's many facets to that. This year, Visit Morro Bay participated in an economic impact study to gain a baseline understanding of tourism economy into Morro Bay. The study showed that there was about $195 million of spend into Morro Bay. Of that, there were 759,000 visitors, 589,000 of those were overnight, and about 170,000 were day visitors. When you break this total spend down, the numbers show about 24% of that is lodging, 23% of that is food and beverage, 19 is retail, 17% is recreation, and 17 is transportation. Truly amazing breakdown for all businesses alike for tourism. The impact of non-lodging business and tourism accounted for about 70%, 76% of the total spend into Morro Bay. This is where the Chamber of Commerce comes in, comes into play for that. Supporting our small businesses throughout the city helps ensure the vitality and economic support that the city needs through the tourism lens, helping the small business owners with resources. Sharing these stats today for you to consider during this business item. Visit Morro Bay has always had a great working relationship with the Chamber, and has, has not changed with Dina and her current team. It's been amazing to work with, and I hope you consider those during that business item. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Michael.
We have one more. One moment.
Thank you.
All right. Nick, you should be allowed to talk.
Great, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Madam Mayor, good evening, Council, good evening. I have a, just one comment on the, the, the non, non-business item. So I, I've heard a few times the roundabout get brought up. And I was, and I've been highly critical of, of this Council and, and this Mayor, but, but I also like doing the right thing here. For, for everyone that has made a comment about the roundabout, I, I don't think that, that the attention is directed in the right way here. This is not a, a City Council problem. This is the second City Council. So the first City Council, two years ago, voted on the roundabout, quite frankly, without doing enough diligence. So everybody is, has made comments about, let's talk, let's talk to high school kids about what we think is right. Let's talk about why we spend a bunch of money and don't have any answers. Let's talk about all these things. But in all actuality, for a project like the roundabout, it's 100% the right thing to do to pause. No one said that it wasn't going to be a project, it was paused so that we could solve the right problem. And the right problem is not to talk to high school kids about what they think the best thing to do is. The problem is, is to solve the problem. There is a ton of reasons why this project will exceed $10 million. That's a factual number. The reasons should be directed towards the City Manager, and, quite frankly, everybody in the City Office. We did not project manage the initial allocation of funds correctly. We did not spend correctly. And we had a deficit on that individual project that far exceeded what we originally thought was going to be allocated for the roundabout in the first place. We didn't consider imminent domain. We didn't consider items that needed to be solved for, that go well above and beyond and are a hell of a lot more simple than doing a roundabout. Imminent domain, we'd have to pay everybody, including the state, to have enough real estate to be able to do a roundabout in the first place. There are a lot of solutions that we could do. We've got a great police department. Let's park somebody out there during lunch hour and actually get people to direct some traffic. If, if that's a budget issue, I'll throw it out there, I'll pay for it. So if...
Thank you, Nick.
You've got to solve this a little bit better here.
Thank you, Nick. AGP, are there any more raised hands in the...
There are no more raised hands.
Thank you, AGP. Okay, with that, I will close public comment on items not on the consent agenda and move on to the consent agenda. I have speaker slips. I will start off with Tim Crowley, followed by Jen Fields, followed by Dawn Beatty.
Good evening, Tim Crowley. I'm here to talk about a 7F, I believe it was, a flagpole ordinance. We've got better things to do than be fighting over flags nowadays. And I'm thrilled to see other people here talking. They've got more of a perspective, some old, straight white dude, talking about this. But if we start backsliding, like we see happening at a national level, I can see why they feel threatened. And if people are serious about stopping the proliferation that, of flags that are going up on the flagpole, I think if we back it off, it shouldn't be just a majority vote of the Council. It should be a unanimous vote. Because City Councils change over the years from one extreme to the other, but there always seems to be one poor outlier, one lone voice crying in the wilderness that would be more apt to maintain a status quo. And I had a lot to say, but I am even more interested to see what these young people that are here today, that are worried about what's happening in our country, have to say about it. So I'm going to cut it short right here. Thank you.
Hello, City Councilmembers, and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jen, and I work and recreate in Morro Bay. You can often see me on trails, running around. I'm here to speak out against the reestablishment of the city's flag policy that would prevent additional commemorative flags being flown for City Council approval. Since the Pride Flag is the only city-approved flag flown under the 2022 policy, rescinding of this policy feels like a direct erasure of 2S LGBTQ+IA+ community. As a member of the queer community and an ally, I see the, seeing a Pride Flag anywhere, especially during Pride Month, makes me feel welcomed and more comfortable in a space. Although a symbol, it's an important one, especially during the attacks against queer and trans rights and lives at the federal level. Local support matters, and we deserve to be celebrated, even if it's the bare minimum like Pride Flags during Pride Month. We are not going anywhere despite the attempts at erasing us. Please reconsider the act of rescinding the 2022 resolution. This is a grave mistake that will not only harm the 2S LGBTQ+IA+ community, but the broader Morro Bay community and visitors to this place as well. Thank you.
Greetings. Me again, totally different subject. Wanted to mention that I support the approval of the closest engineer's report. I have to say, though, it is important not to see the dredging of the Stormwater Basin, also known as the Pond. And I know it's on the city Public Works, Capitol Project Programs list, or whatever, number 35 out of 37, but we at least made the list. But recap from last year. That, what we know as a pond, collects water from the east side of Morro Bay, all of it, from the gutters, cleans it before it sends it to another pond where it's also clean, and sends it out to the ocean. So it's not just this pretty thing we all look at ducks at, although you can't look at ducks anymore, it's not a single duck there anymore. But it serves a purpose. Now, it's very close to the top. I don't personally know all the details, but it's, it needs to be dredged. So mentioning that again, to make sure it stays on the capital improvement list, but also makes it into future engineers reports. I've spoken with the city engineer, and she and I are going to put our heads together to make sure things such as this, and whatever else it can come up with, make it into the engineer's report for future versions. Anyway, that's all for now.
Thank you, Dawn. I have Walter Heath, followed by Kristen Kent, and Monica Garza, I believe. Sorry if that's wrong.
Thanks very much, Walter Heath, once again in Morro Bay. You know, I just would kind of like caution you against what I like to call Burgermeister complex, you know, where, you know, the Burgermeister in Germany comes in, and it's a person of great status, and he goes, you know, from business to business, and what can we do for you today? You know, and all this stuff. Don't make this a political football, where it gets brought back to you. I mean, and micromanage a situation like this. Be a policymaking body. Set up the parameters for city staff to make decisions, if that's what you want to do. And then if people feel like they're getting a raw deal, it comes back to Council. I, I, I just don't get, I, I don't like the micromanaging that I'm seeing from this Council, and people going from here to there, you know, just kind of basically, you fluff yourselves up by going to business, business, whoa, you know, tell me what you're concerned about, and blah, 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 blah. You know, be a policymaking body. That's what we want from you. Frankly, I don't trust you with the political football. So I, I just want you to, I, I totally support display the, of the Pride Flag. I feel that we should show members of this, of our community our love and support. It's, it's a persecuted group, it's, it's getting rougher and rougher, you know, with the current administration and so forth. And we need to make a statement. And, you know, and if that means that, you know, somebody gets to fly the "Don't Tread on Me" flag for a few days, great. You know, then maybe you limit the time or something. Set the parameters, right? And, and let city staff do it. They can do that. I mean, you know, they do planning decisions and stuff, you know? They're out there doing their jobs every day, and if something, somebody feels like they're getting a raw deal, then it comes back to you, and they talk to you and say, hey, we're getting a raw deal, and, and then you do something about it. I, I just really don't like, you know, dedicating City Council time and meeting time to this kind of stuff. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Kristen Kent of Los Osos, and I enjoy many amenities in Morro Bay. You were elected as leaders in your community because you care about people and their well-being. We all deserve the freedom to live our lives as our authentic selves without being marginalized. Unfortunately, there's a problem. You are considering disallowing city facilities to display the Pride Flag. The colors on the Pride Flag signify and celebrate the uniqueness of each individual. It recognizes the full range of people in our world, a variety of gender identities, sexual orientations, and ethnicities. Rejecting certain people can be one facet of a broader goal of taking away our freedoms. Do you really want to take this step backwards? Your policies and actions are steps in the quest for freedom, and now is your time to chart a better future for people of all genders. Thank you for continuing to fly the Pride Flag, messaging tourists and the Central Coast, that the city of Morro Bay supports all people. You can light the way to a better future where all people of all races, genders, and backgrounds are free to be ourselves and to thrive. Thank you.
Monica? No, Monica? Willow, followed by Amy Brantley, followed by Piper Pedro? Willow, I didn't want to say your last name wrong, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, esteemed Councilmembers and staff. My name is Willow Kawamoto, that's how you pronounce it. I represent two letters of the LGBTQ. I'll let you guess which ones they are. No, I won't. They are the L and the T. Yes, you can be both at the same time. So I just want to start saying, there are 20, roughly 28 million LGBTQ in California. 220,000 are transgender. The national average is 1.6%, 1.6% of that population are trans. Let's just apply that to the town of Morro Bay. Out of 10,500 people, roughly 168 people are trans. It may not be much, but we are a part of this city, a viable part of the city. The national recent executive orders like EO 14151 and EO 14168, these are executive orders that are designed to not only create budget cuts, but they'll also create dangerous human cuts. We know that these cuts are being made across the board by DOGE and these EOs. States and cities are losing their funds in various forms due to the adherence to a more obligation to DEI initiatives. But this is a small town. This is my small town. I came out in this town, a lesbian-owned bar, just right down on the Barcadero. That's what this town means to me. I was here in 2022, when the initial discussion was about raising the flag. I was here in 2023, when the flag was raised. Cal, Cal Poly Research did state, less than half of LGBTQ individuals in Slow County feel like they do not belong in the community where they belong, belong here. Let's make the EMS slogan our slogan, "We care for everyone." Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Wickson, and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I understand the decision to fly only the United States. California and Morro Bay flags may come from a desire to remain neutral, but in today's political climate, that choice doesn't feel neutral at all. It feels like a step backwards. For LGBTQ+ people like me, not being allowed to fly the Pride Flag on city property feels like a punch to the gut. The Pride Flag is not just a symbol of celebration, it's a symbol of safety, solidarity, and welcome. When it's flown, it tells LGBTQ+ people... When it's flown, it tells LGBTQ+ people, residents and visitors alike, that they are seen, that they matter, and that local government has their back. I appreciate that we're still able to fly flags on private property. Thank you for protecting our right to free expression. But let's be honest, the message this sends from the city is loud and clear. It feels like a reversal, a course correction not rooted in neutrality, but in fear and in some cases, political bias. As a small business owner on Main Street, I've proudly flown the pride flag to show support for the community. I've spoken with many LGBTQ+ tourists over the years, people from across California and beyond, who've asked what Morro Bay is like. Do you feel safe here? Are we welcomed? And we've always been able to say without hesitation, yes, absolutely. We have a vibrant LGBTQ community here, and we've felt supported. That flag helped people feel safe enough to walk through our doors, to explore our town, and many even said, "I want to live here." It mattered to them because it meant that they were welcome. Taking that symbol down now in this moment doesn't feel like neutrality. It feels like rejection, and that hurts. Flying the pride flag is not about replacing the American flag, it's about fulfilling its promise. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Piper Fedro, and I'm a longtime resident of Morro Bay. I'm a small business owner, homeowner, a community volunteer, and parent to a young child. I'm here to voice my opposition to Agenda Item 7F, which would rescind Resolutions 10322 and 10422 that supported the ability for the council to vote to fly flags that express the city's values, most notably the pride flag in support of the LGBTQIA+ community and its allies. I've seen this city adapt to growth, and I've seen the way it works to preserve the natural beauty and small-town charm it's known for. I've seen immeasurable acts of love here, families supporting one another during times of crisis, neighbors helping one another, community members raising funds and awareness for those with fewer resources. I've also seen how reliant it's become on the tourism industry. Over the years, Morro Bay has become nearly a year-round destination for visitors from all over. I want the members of this council to think about what adopting this resolution says about this city's values, who it harms, what a decision like this says to those who live here and raise our children here, and those who visit, supporting our businesses, staying at our hotels, and contributing to our city's budget. It says we aren't as open as we claim to be. It says the values we try to instill in our children, inclusivity, empathy, and acceptance, don't really matter. It says we're afraid of free expression. It says we want your money, but we don't want you to come as you are. It says we'd rather regress instead of progress. Quite frankly, it's not a good look. And when we close the door to welcoming all, and yes, passing resolutions like this do just that, we close the doors to opportunities to learn, grow, evolve, and thrive as a community. Like so many of you, I want to see Morro Bay thrive, not spending energy on reversing a resolution that I can't imagine anyone has lost sleep over these past three years. So let's focus our time and tax dollars on supporting businesses, ensuring our neighbors have access to affordable housing, protecting our coastline, safeguarding our children's future, and celebrating all that our city has to offer, instead of devaluing our worth by passing a resolution that will exclude valuable members of our community. Please don't pass the proposed resolution. Thank you.
I have no more speaker slips. Anyone else for public comment on consent agenda items?
Hello, my name is Sky Steele. I've been a resident of the Central Coast for most of my life through Santa Barbara County and San Luis County, and I'm here to also talk about the flag addendum. We talked about neutrality, and I feel that neutrality in the face of hate communicates acceptance, permission, and complicity. As of April 29th, the ACLU lists 575 anti-LGBTQ bills in the U.S. We've seen DEI rollbacks, refusal and disallowance of gender-inclusive language in federal programs and departments, and direct targeting of trans rights at the federal level. The pressure felt from the current legislation to erase queer identities is palpable. In 2022, the Morro Bay City Council passed Resolution 10422 in the aftermath of the Club Q shooting with a full eye vote from all attending council members. Now standing in 2025, it feels more vital than ever to stand with the diversity within our community. Our gender identities, our sexualities are core to our being. Our existence is not divisive. We should stand with diversity. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Jay, and I was born and raised here in Morro Bay. I've lived most of my life here, proud resident. I was at City Hall on June 1st, 2022, the first time the pride flag was raised with a little ceremony with the mayor and city leaders, and it gave me so much civic and personal pride to know that my city was showing love and support for marginalized communities, that it was a welcoming place. So it distresses me greatly that after several years of this not being a problem, the council is now unnecessarily looking to ban this pride flag on city property. In this time of national attacks against minorities and marginalized communities, it seems more imperative than ever for a welcoming town like Morro Bay to show that it cares about these individuals. To ban the flag now gives the appearance of signing on to an oppressive, hateful national agenda that wants to erase anyone who is a minority. If you ban the pride flag from being flown, I ask you to consider the following. First, what message are you trying to send to the LGBTQ+ members of the Morro Bay community? You're suggesting you do not care about the gay and trans people who live here and want to erase their representation from public view. Second, I implore you to consider the effects this will have on the image of this town. Imagine the headlines that will come. "Small touristy town in California bans pride flag." LGBTQ people who might have visited our town will see that and think, "Morro Bay is an unsafe, homophobic, unwelcoming place." They will not want to visit. Is this the image you want for our potential visitors and of our town? I will say even Boise, Idaho recently approved the flying of the rainbow flag. I never thought I would see the day when Boise, Idaho was more welcoming to LGBTQ people than Morro Bay, California. I ask that you please continue to allow the pride flag to be flown in June as it has the past few years to show Morro Bay as a welcome, open community to residents and visitors. Thank you.
My name is Emiliano. I've been a resident of the Central Coast for almost a decade now. I'm a member of an organization called Abolitionist Action Central Coast Slow, and I am here tonight to say that I proudly and outspokenly support allowing commemorative flags such as the pride flag to be flown at city facilities. I proudly and outspokenly support the resolution that Item 7.06 seeks to repeal. And if you're here tonight to support the flying of the pride flag, I am proud to stand with you too. It is very transparent which flag this item is targeting. It is shameful that those on this body who support this item would only proclaim their support for some members of this community and not others. Trans and queer people are under attack in all areas of public life. This presidential administration has made it clear that they want us gone, they want us out of sight, they want to roll back the clock to the time before marriage equality, they want to take us back to the era of police raids on gay bars, they want trans people to lose access to healthcare, they want trans and queer children not to be who they are. They call us groomers for even acknowledging their existence. In this context, public support, loud vocal support for trans and queer people is more critical than perhaps it's ever been before. Morro Bay should absolutely fly the pride flag as a commemorative flag. This council should not adopt Item 7.06. And if you do adopt it, your trans and queer constituents and those who support us will never forget that you all passed a resolution preventing this council from expressing the bare minimum of support for us during a time when we're under attack. Thank you.
Hi, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I'm your neighbor from the south. I live in Arroy Grande. There's a child at the high school there that is being ruthlessly slandered and targeted as a transgender individual. That's my child. That's national news in our Central Coast. I grew up here. Hate is here. Flying the flag allows kids that don't have the support at home to realize that there is support out there. Support this community, please.
Good evening. My name is John Noel, and I've been a resident of Morro Bay for over 40 years. And I just want to point out that in 1988, a long time ago, "a kinder, gentler nation" was a phrase that was associated with former U.S. President George H.W. Bush. He used the phrase in his 1988 Republican Convention Acceptance Speech and his 1989 inaugural address. The phrase became a signature part of his legacy and campaign slogan. Bush envisioned our nation as a force for good, both at home and abroad, and used this phrase to convey his desire for a more compassionate and unified nation. Let's be a more compassionate and unified city. Let's fly the pride flag. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, council and mayor. I wasn't intending to speak. I'm glad that my friends are here, just want to support them. But what I didn't hear mentioned is, I'm wondering what this item was doing on the consent agenda. I appreciate whoever polled it. I'm not sure, I live in San Luis Obispo, I haven't lived in Morro Bay for a while, I'm not sure, understanding how the rules work, whether public can pull it or not, but the fact that this was on the consent agenda that was just supposed to pass without discussion, without each one of you defending the decision and explaining what the harm was, because I mean, this was passed by a previous council. You need a reason to repeal it. You need to tell the public that reason. Every single one of you needs to tell the public that reason. I'm not getting that reason here tonight. And so I'm wondering, what was the harm that was caused? What was the threat that was placed against the city? What motivation is behind it? So just, this should have been a public hearing item at the least. Thank you.
Counsel, Judy Setting. The main thing I want to say is, the long time that I've lived here in Morro Bay, I've always felt that it was an accepting city. And even in my weird times, I was still accepted. The people who live here, I mean, my gosh, they're kind, they're loving, they're not really concerned with, you know, what you wear or what your, you know, feelings are as far as not agreeing with them or anything. I like to believe that people can talk to each other and be civil and just be inclusive. And we share something that not everybody shares, and that's a beautiful, beautiful place to live, whether we have a one-room shack, you know. You're just in love with our surroundings, our rock, our water, everything. And we value every single person who lives here, and we value our visitors. We're thankful for our visitors. We want to share what we have been able to enjoy. We want to share bringing our kids to the ocean, having no money, but finding the greatest joy in watching them run into the water. And we just want to be inclusive, and I don't think you've made a mistake. I think you're trying to be inclusive. We have a United States flag, we have a California flag, we have a city flag, and those represent all of us, all of us who live here. And I'm sorry that this is a difficult time, but I think at the top of it, we value everybody, everybody in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Hi, my name is Angie Kasperzak. I'm from San Luis Obispo. I have been sending out emails to you guys to see if you guys want to recognize June with a pride proclamation. And I came here today, I wasn't planning on coming, when I saw that you guys put this in the consent agenda, mostly because I do not get emails back when I send the emails to you guys. I do get emails back from smaller towns that are not as inclusive as Morro Bay. Since this new rendition of the Morro Bay City Council, I've gotten nothing back from you guys, complete silence. So I do not feel like this rendition of the Morro Bay City Council is inclusive. I do not feel like they value the LGBTQ+ community. I think we're going to get a response back that's going to be political in nature, that's going to pretend that they heard everyone speaking today, that's going to both sides this issue, but that your guys' minds were already made up, and that's why you guys put this on the consent agenda. I think that's why I don't get any response whatsoever to my emails. At least with the smaller communities, they tell me that while they support the LGBTQ community, that they know that their constituents would not be for it, and they give me a very supportive email back. I've gotten zero response from you guys. I didn't even think it was worth it for me to come or for my friends to come and speak to you. It's just very upsetting, disappointing, when the City of Morro Bay has always been known as a very welcoming and inclusive space. It's very disheartening that you guys are doing this, that you put it on the consent agenda, and that I don't believe you guys are actually listening to the people in this room. Thank you.
Hi, I don't actually live here in Morro Bay. I live in San Luis Obispo, but for 22 years, I have lived in San Luis Obispo County, bouncing around from town to town, and I've loved it here my whole life. I am a queer person, I'm a person of color, obviously, I'm an immigrant, and it's important to me that this city, along with my entire county, continues to uplift and defend our queer community. And it's disheartening to see that members, as Mr. Eccles put so gracefully earlier, our public servants are not listening to their constituents and flat-out ignoring them for what, for federal pressure? For pressure from the federal government to remove and to erase people who voted you in? I'd like to remind you, and if you disappoint and fail your constituents, I'd like to remind you that we are the ones that put you in these positions, and we are the ones that can decide whether or not you will be back in these chairs. Thank you.
Mandy Davis, I had no intentions of speaking on this tonight, but I just can't help myself. I'm going to say something you guys aren't going to like a whole lot. I have not pledged allegiance to the flag of America for a very long time. And here's the reason why. When I pledge allegiance to something, I pledge allegiance because I believe in it. I believe in what it says, I believe in what it stands for. The very last few words of our pledge of allegiance for the United States is "individual with liberty and justice for all." I tell you what, if you guys were flying the pride flag along with the flag of the United States, along with the flag of California, along with the flag of Morro Bay, I would be much more inclined to make that pledge of allegiance to something I believe in, to something that is inclusive, to something that is loving at its base as opposed to divisive. There you go.
AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Yes, there is, mayor. One moment, please. We're going to start with Nick DeAngelis. You can speak now. Can you go ahead and test so I can hear you?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
One moment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Nick.
Yes, now we can.
Thanks. It's, this flag, this flag conversation is very interesting for a lot of different reasons. So I encourage everybody that showed up today to continue to show up for these meetings because it's because it's a new demographic, which I welcome. However, there are some falsities that were said here. I've been on these calls. Unfortunately, I can't attend in person. I've been a Morro Bay resident for a long time, graduated from Morro Bay High, have two kids in the area. This is not just about the pride flag. This is about all other flags. So the first resolution that was adopted is not just exclusive to the pride flag. For whatever reason, in the resolution that's being discussed today, it calls out the pride flag. There was also numerous conversations about not having biases towards any one individual flag that is outside of the three flags. This is not a new consent agenda item. It's a previous consent agenda that, quite frankly, should have been handled in the last meeting, but it wasn't. And now it's a point to make sure that the legalities go through correctly because the conversation did not end properly in the last meeting. But this was about a POW flag? This was about many other flags. I've served in the government. I love gay people. I love all people. This conversation about a pride flag meaning something to everybody, I can appreciate. But I resonate with a POW flag. But I also resonate as an American with the American flag. And for everybody here, like, the Fourteenth Amendment provides equal protection under the law for everyone, backed by the Supreme Court. That's as good as it needs to be. You can even reference Obergefell versus Hodges. It's the same theme for same-sex marriages. The protections are not just about flying a flag. I have a very partial, a very partial connection to the POW flag. But that's the stance that was taken, which is to just fly an unbiased approach, that is, the biases this country was built on in general. So this is, the points that are here are, quite frankly, like, I can appreciate everybody's commentary. I hope everybody continues to show up to these meetings. But there is an extreme miss in what-
Your time is going-
... a week on this conversation.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any other raised hands, AGP?
Yes, Mayor, one moment. Leanna, you should be able to speak now, if you could try.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Linnea Valdivia, and I'm here today to speak in opposition to the proposed revision to the city's flag policy. So a lot of what I have to say has already been said. Twenty-twenty-two, council adopted a policy that allows commemorative flags to be flown as an expression of the official views of the city. This is not forum for public speech. This is not a free speech debate. This ordinance was passed as a thoughtful, deliberate act to recognize communities, moments, and values that matter to Morro Bay. And now, just weeks before Pride Month, the council is proposing to take that policy away under an consent agenda item. I don't believe this timing is accidental, and I don't believe that this is about neutrality holds up under any scrutiny. This isn't a question of free speech or individual rights. This is about whether the city of Morro Bay chooses to show public solidarity with its LGBTQ residents. It's about whether the city is willing to stand behind the values of inclusion and dignity in material and visible ways. The flags of United States, California, and Morro Bay are meaningful, and many people have spoken about seeing themselves reflected in those flags, but they do not automatically represent everyone. Not all Morro Bay residents are citizens, for example. Many people, or immigrants, people of color, and yes, even queer people, have had to fight to be seen and included under those symbols, and indeed, the Fourteenth Amendment. The idea that the shit-city should only do things that represent everyone is simply not how representative government works. Cities, states, countries make decisions all the time that don't reflect every single resident's values or beliefs. Not everyone agrees with how money is spent. We've seen that today. Not everyone supports every roundabout project, every zoning change, every proclamation, but we still act. Because leadership means taking principled stands, not about pleasing everyone. Pride is so much more than rainbow flags and glitter. Will pride not exist without a flag flying over Morro Bay? No. But pride is a promise that we will fight and show up for each other, that we will fight for one another, and that we will lead with love, taking the flag down since the opposite message that some people don't belong.
Are there any more raised hands, AGP?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council and close public comment on the consent agenda. Thank you all for your comments. Does anyone want to pull any items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take this opportunity to pull Item 7F, adoption of reestablishing the city's flagpole policy.
I'll second that.
Any other items to be pulled? Other items to be pulled? As for a motion to approve the consent agenda less Item 7F, please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda less Item 7F.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Councilmember Echols.
All right, thank you. It's good to see a packed house here tonight. And it's good to see some visitors from outside of Morro Bay as well. For those of you that haven't met me, my name's Jeff Echols. I've lived here for twenty-plus years. I've served this town for twenty years, and I love Morro Bay. I love the folks in it. I love the Central Coast, and I love the folks on the Central Coast. I brought this forward because I had heard from lots of constituents. So it wasn't something that just came out of thin air. And I'm going to read, because many of you weren't here when this was brought forward originally, I'm going to read the statement that I put forth a couple of weeks ago. What I want to emphasize tonight is this is not about any specific commemorative flag. I acknowledge what I heard here tonight. This is not about any commemorative flag. So what I'm going to do is read the statement that I gave two weeks ago, and then I'll conclude my remarks and see if there's any other comment. Tonight, I'm asking my fellow council members to join me in rescinding the current flagpole policy that allows for commemorative flags to be flown based on the views and opinions of potentially just three council members out of a town of over ten thousand. I believe this policy represents a gross overreach of local government, and by its very nature is divisive, not inclusive. Our flagpole is a symbol of unity, not a platform for expressing selective viewpoints. When we choose to fly one group's flag over another's, we are inevitably excluding some members of our community. That's not the role of government. We are here to represent everyone, not to signal particular beliefs or causes, no matter how worthy they may seem to some. The policy I propose is simple, neutral, and unifying. Fly only the flags that represent all of us, the United States flag, the state of California, and the city of Morro Bay. These are the symbols that bind us together, not divide us. This isn't about denying expression. People are free to fly any flag they wish on their own property, as they should be. But the city's flagpole should stand for all citizens, not used to make political or cultural statements that divide the city. I encourage you to vote with me to return our flagpole to what it was meant to be, a symbol of shared identity and unity. So that's what I read a couple of weeks ago, and the council voted five-oh to carry forward with direction to staff with the revision in the policy tonight. It wasn't a mistake. This is typically the order that things go. Because direction was given a couple of weeks ago, staff came back with the recommendation that was made, and it is typically put on the consent agenda. I'm pulling that because it deserves further attention, because of the sensitivity of this matter. I acknowledge that the timing looks suspect. I've heard from a lot of folks about the timing. I can tell you that this started several months ago. I didn't intend for the timing to be right before the start of Pride Month. So here's what I would, here's what I'm going to propose to our council tonight, that this revision in our flagpole policy become effective July 1st, 2025.
Excuse me. We were very respectful and allowed you to all speak. So if you could please hold your comments, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, it's interesting. I am a public servant, and someone said that public servants have a high call of honor and duty, and that that's to listen to you. You can believe what we're saying, or what I'm saying, or not. That's your prerogative. But I can tell you, I'm speaking from the heart. I do believe this will unite the community. I believe that commemorative flags take us down a path of tribalism and separating the community further and further. And again, I've heard from a number of constituents about this even while I was running for office, and frankly, back when the flagpole policy was put in place originally. So all I can tell you, and you can take me at my word or not take me at my word, is this is not about any particular flag. It's simply not. People may say that we're micromanaging today. I suppose the council, back in 2022, if you agreed with what they were doing, wasn't micromanaging. But this is, I'm bringing forward this revision so that there's not an ongoing case of micromanagement and division. So that's, so- So public comment is closed. I'd appreciate the opportunity to address you with dignity. So, oh, and one last comment. Someone mentioned that we don't respond to emails. I know that I respond to every single email that I receive. So if there's emails sometimes that may be sent to the city clerk or city manager without CCing the council, there may be something that happened there. But I know several other of the council members up here have a policy, as I do, to respond to every single email that they receive. I'm proud of the fact that I've done that. So those are the end of my comments. I hope that my comments are meant in the spirit that they're given to you, or that they're received in the spirit that I've given them to you, at their face value. And I do hope that the intent of this revision will manifest in greater unity as we move forward. Thank you.
Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left?
I think, Mayor, I want to begin by saying that I'm really appreciative of all those of you that came out tonight from the LGBTQ community to express how you felt about this. I tried to express at the last meeting that I was worried, I guess, concerned about how this would be perceived. I was concerned about whether or not we were being conscious and aware of the decision that we were making that night. I would personally like to take the opportunity to speak a little bit more. It's interesting, because I think I was looking at this a little bit differently. I was looking about not just the flag, the American flag, being of inclusivity of all of us, and looking for that neutrality. But I was feeling this protection. I'm not happy with what I'm seeing at the federal level, by any means. But I'm also worried because there's a lot of things going on, including ICE raids on the Central Coast. And so I think I was just getting concerned for the safety of all of our community members. And that was where my heart was. So I wanted to apologize to you if you took it any other way. And I'm not sure, you know, where we can go with this tonight, and what this means as far as whether or not we can have more discussion or how this works. So I'm going to throw it back to my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards, and everyone. And thank you again to everybody who showed up and spoke this evening. I have no more further comments. Councilmember Echols, so is your item pulled?
Are there comments on that side?
I guess I'll just add, are we making comments to, like, and then we're going to vote? Is that what we're doing? I, I mean, there's many reasons, I mean, there's not many reasons. I appreciate all the people that have come to speak tonight, and I just really want to be really clear that the reason that I voted the way that I did was not because I don't, you know, respect other people's, you know, lifestyles and, or anything like that. It has nothing to do with that. It's just, as Councilmember Echols said, it's really keeping it more simple. Like, the focus should be, in my mind, just the business of the city and running the city. And tonight's a really good example, because if there were another flag introduced, and there were three council members that thought that was okay to fly, we might have another night like this. We might have many nights like this. And actually, business wouldn't be getting done. And I just really think that it's important to remember that, I mean, it's a choice you make, how you look at this, but it's really, for me, and I think I, most of us feel the same way, that it's, the focus should be on the business of the city of Morro Bay and keeping it, the flags to the flags that we are- We took an oath to, you know, uphold the Constitution of the state of California and the US, you know, the US government, the federal constitution. And that's what our focus is. And so I know it sounds like that's, you know, not inclusive, but, you know, in my mind, that is just, to keep it simple and to keep it clean, that's really what we need to do. I mean, there is another aspect to it. I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the city is the one that buys the flag, and the city staff, you know, raises it. It's just, when we, everything we look at up here, I know most of you don't come to very many meetings, but everything we look at involves cost, and there is cost too. So that is another element to it. And so that's, those are my thoughts.
All right. See no further discussion. I make a motion that we approve Item 7F of the consent agenda, the adoption of Resolution Number 23-25, reestablishing the city's flagpole policy. Oh, thank you for that reminder. To be effective July 1st, 2025.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five-oh. Thank you. We'll take a break. Thank you, and we'll- Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on with the Item 9A. Review and direction for economic development contract. City Manager Kimball, thank you.
Sorry. We, tonight, we're asking the city council to consider the contract proposal made by the Chamber of Commerce. And just a quick background, Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Agreement, the current one expires in June 2020, 2025, sorry, 2025. And the chamber has expressed interest in continuing a contract arrangement. Originally, chamber staff have submitted a proposal in March. And upon that, chamber staff had met with, requested to meet with council members and the city staff. So upon all the reviews, I had suggested a scope of work at $45,000 plus optional costs. And chamber staff revised their proposal and submitted a revised one on May 8th. And that new proposal is included in the packet, and the total amount is $50,000 a year. So tonight, before you, if you want to go- So tonight before you, there, if we want to go into, we want to have, we're not expecting the city council to go into all the details with the scope of work, so on and so forth, the details is not expected. However, briefly, the city council's option, um, the city's options will can continue in a new contract or have no contract or we can provide as needed project specific, um, agreement, go that route. That's, uh, so that's basically the three options related to the contract and proposal. While you, considering your, your options and we put together this, this history from, um, we did a research, staff did research that we put together, we researched back to fiscal year 2012 and there's some arrangements. So the chamber and city has been having a, um, many years of history, having some sort of agreement, either economic development services or the, to provide visitor, visitor center services or both in a couple of years. Again, the, as, as stated in the staff memo, the recommended city council action is to provide policy decision on the service proposal made by the Chamber of Commerce. And then the effective way of doing that, just determine a funding amount. The recommended amount is $50,000 and, and that's a city staff put together and then Chambers proposes $50,000 a year. So these are very similar amount. And after that, you can give a staff direction to, once you, you determine a funding, funding amount and staff can bring back a more detailed, um, scope of work and put in a contract for city council to consider if that's the direction to go. So with that, um, Chamber, Chamber CEO has a presentation on what she had proposed.
Sure. Of course. Well, it's been an interesting night. Now we're up. Good evening, Mayor, council members and fellow community members. My name is Deana Lundquist. I am the CEO for the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. I come before you tonight and I've joined, I joined the chamber eight months ago, following over two decades of leadership roles within the private sector. My experience centers on building strong teams, coordinating across departments and delivering lasting value. As a leader, I prioritize collaboration, accountability and a shared commitment to excellence. I was asked to bring my resume tonight. Would you like me to go over that with you or just give you the highlights? Okay. You have it. Great. When I stepped into the role at the chamber, they were operating with 1.7 dedicated staff members. Jody Ollier and Lindsay Hansen. They have done an extraordinary effort, given the challenges that they had faced. They had a leadership change, they had an interim CEO, and they managed to continue to forge ahead and provide value to the business community and also execute on events seamlessly during this time. I applaud them for that. Over these months, I have had the opportunity to work alongside the city directors who have been open to discussing business issues and city objectives. Would you also like me to review the existing contract?
Thank you, Deana. We already have it. Unless there's something specific you want to share out of it.
Okay. Rebuilding this partnership, I know that the relationship between the chamber and the city has seen its share of challenges. However, I firmly believe that we are at an inflection point, an opportunity to move forward in a way that strengthens our community. And I heard from many of you tonight how the community is starting to heal, starting to come together. What a great community we have. We also have a wonderful business community too. And I think this is the time that we come together. We've had, we've coming off an election that was very divisive in our community and it's time our democracy worked wonderfully. Now it's time to move forward as a whole and as a community. Progress is only possible when we focus on the future and embrace new ideas. To chart the best path forward, I proactively met with our elected officials and asked two key questions. Can the relationship between the chamber and the city be repaired? And can we move forward with a proactive relationship? What I heard in response was encouraging. There is a shared interest in a stronger collaboration, one that delivers measurable benefits to our business and local economy. From these conversations, several priorities emerged. You wanted a business focused, focused outcomes from the chamber and the city's collaboration by supporting new businesses, business retention and taking a proactive approach in shaping economic priorities. There was an interest in events, expanding tourism and community engagement through dynamic idea programming with the businesses. There was an interest in downtown revitalization, creating vibrant spaces that support both business and residents. And then finally workforce, workforce and income-based housing solutions, addressing critical needs to ensure economic sustainability. In doing this contract, it has evolved. With this feedback in mind, I initially proposed an economic vitality agreement for $90,000, designed to align with the city's goals and generate both immediate and long-term Through collaborative discussions with the city manager and some of the city council, this contract has evolved into a chamber services agreement. For context, the chamber's previous contracts with the city ranged from 116,000 in 2019 to 90,000 before being reduced by 51% to 44,000. Talk about rolling back prices. Tonight I present to you services agreement for $50,000 encompassing 23 line items from the chamber's proposal with 33 line items from the city manager's recommendations. Our value proposition as a chamber of commerce exists to serve the business community first and foremost as a membership-based organization. However, a strong partnership with our city benefits all of us by ensuring economic vitality, promoting local businesses and maintaining a pulse on community needs. I want to be clear, this is not a donation. This is a fee-for-service contract carefully designed to deliver tangible benefits to the city. The staff's report mention of financially supporting the chamber doesn't capture the reality of this partnership. It's an investment in our shared economic future. You are paying for services and information and insights that the chamber has with over 300 members and we are in turn given the access to communication and information that can benefit our business community. So this is a two-way street. For transparency, here's how the chamber's funding is structured. Membership dues are 39% of how we are funded. Events and sponsorship are 37%. The city contract last year was 22% of our contract, of our overall budget. The Chamber of Commerce is committed to fostering a stronger, more collaborative relationship with the city, one that prioritizes economic growth and prosperity for our businesses and residents alike. This agreement represents a fair, strategic investment that will yield long-term dividends for our community. Together, we have an opportunity to revitalize our local economy, strengthen business networks and ensure a thriving future for Morro Bay. So on this first slide, it's, once again, I want to explain what the Chamber of Commerce core mission is, and that is to engage and empower businesses in Morro Bay to thrive. We're a 69-year-old institution within this community. We've been around longer than this city has been incorporated. We serve as a vital connection between businesses and local government and the community. What does the chamber do for its members? We provide networking opportunities, partnerships by way of events, mixers, ribbon cuttings, introductions to their fellow business members. We engage with our leading industries in this community in rest, the restaurants and the hotel industries. And most importantly, we should be very proud of the advocacy that this chamber has through their government affairs committee. All of you have attended a government affairs committee meeting, engaged with community members, engaged with business owners, where we learned what your objectives were in your role, as well as understanding what the business community's objectives are and to be heard by us. We also advocate on behalf of our individual businesses by helping them navigate through the city's various departments. If they get stuck in a process, we connect them with the right person and help them through any issues that they may have. And we speak on behalf of these businesses as well. We provide resources, support services. We're having a, a job fair that's coming up in order to supply, as we get ready to start in our busy season, all of our businesses need a strong workforce. So we're connecting our job seekers, training them, getting them prepared for a successful interview and then engaging with our employers to come and interview these individuals. We engage with organizations like Spoke, SCORE, Small Business Development Center, the MCSC. They have fantastic opportunities and classes, mentorship programs that can help our businesses. In the state of California has a lower success rate after five years of being in business of you continuing to stay in business. So that first year is critical, but that fifth year, 50% of the businesses drop off and don't make it. Who do you think helps them? The Chamber of Commerce helps them. The city helps them. Their community helps them. And then finally, we engage with our community through our events. The chamber has sponsored and put on Breakfast on the Bay for a number of years now and has done a wonderful job of networking for our businesses, providing the community opportunities to learn from their businesses outside of our community and in our region as well. We provide great events like Shop Sip and Stroll. We've had big events in the past, the Avocado Margarita Festival, things such as that, that bring individuals from out of town, from in our county and in our city and give us a reputation of a fun place to come beyond our beautiful rock and our ocean. It gives them an opportunity to engage with our business owners and meet our community. What can the chamber do in partnership with the city? Well, we're a bridge between business and government. We help them better understand, uh, the pluses and minuses of some of the industries, some of the trials and some of the positive things that are happening in our business community. We're an information hub where the community and visitors outside of our county, outside of our state come every single day to the Chamber of Commerce and ask questions, what is there to do in Morro Bay? And the chamber answers those emails, those phone calls and those individual visitors that come into our office every day, even though we do not have a visitor center anymore. Problem solving and business growth. Again, we advocate on behalf of our businesses to help them through the process with our city and with their neighbors, whatever they may have, we help them with that. We want them to not only start with Morro Bay, but end with Morro Bay. Economic development and recruitment. We are instituting some programs on a district level to identify specific, uh, opportunities in certain areas of our town. We have never split up the four districts and really understood what's driving the downtown sales tax revenue that isn't happening in other districts. How can we better support North Morro Bay? What's going on on Quintona Road? What do they need? They're going to be going through, uh, some changes here soon and we want to be sure that we support the businesses and we support the workforce there. The chamber funding model, I told you, it's a three-legged stool. It's business memberships are supported predominantly through the chamber. Our city contract, again, it's a partnership. If we have something you want, we're happy to provide that with you on a fee-for-service basis. You have something we can share with our business. It's natural in every city in this county has a Chamber of Commerce and a city contract, unless there a chamber that has become a volunteer chamber. But your cities in this county have both, and they have an economic development director too, because the chamber can't do it all and the city can't do it all either. Our contract, I won't go into the details of it, but we cover five areas. That's the enhanced general services, enhanced membership services for you, events and engagement, business vitality, which is probably the most exciting one because it's going to give you some metrics to really look at when a business starts here, what's happening in six months, what's happening in nine months, what's happening a year from now and what is the likelihood that they're going to keep able to continue. And then the second most important thing is business retention. You know, you, you might ask me, well, what happened to this business? Well, we need to follow those businesses. We need to stay with them so that they don't sit alone. If they've been in business for five years and they thought they had this thing figured out, but the economy is always changing. So it's the chamber and our ability to communicate with these businesses to get them to open up and share with us. And if there's something that our city can do to support them, then we'll come to you with that. If there's something another agency can do through grants or through loans that they may need, we'll help guide them through that program. And it's in our best interest for that to happen as well. And then finally, the downtown district initiative that I know is a particularly, um, point of, uh, interest for Councilmember Echols and, um, also Edwards. It's, uh, also important for us because we see that to be a growing, evolving community and a very, um, bright opportunity for us. We have a great Embarcadero that also could use some support, but our downtown, I think, is an emerging opportunity for us. Our value proposition is creating a direct partnership with the city and the business community, providing professional business advocacy and support, delivering structured economic development initiatives, offering a district-specific focus to address unique needs, enhancing communication between the stakeholders. And that's you and me and our business community having an open dialogue, whether we agree or not, we need to have that dialogue. If we don't, we're going to suffer as a city. And supporting both tourism and year-round economic vitality. And now my throat is so dry. Fire away.
Thank you, Deana.
You bet.
Questions for Deana? Anyone? My left? Any questions for Deana? No? Jeff?
Thank you.
Any questions for Deana?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. Okay. Questions for staff? Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that, I think this, I would, I would direct this question to City Manager Kimball. I, I know that, um, somewhere in your report, you mentioned something with refer to, um, like optimally, there might be a situation long-term where we would probably look at having, uh, somebody in-house doing some of the, um, work as well as then having a partnership with the chamber. Obviously, you know, that's speculative and I was just wondering if you wanted to kind of expand on what you meant by that.
Certainly, um, Mayor Proton Edwards, thank you for the question. It's, it is my experience that the relationship is a two-way street and, and It is my experience that the relationship is a two-way street, and if the city has not had a dedicated economic development function within our government, and for... So the city has been... The city's approach has been that pretty much everybody in the city, every department, take a piece of economic development. And of course, we have to say, what do you see as economic development? And without getting into my philosophy of city's role in economic development, I would say that a partnership. The city has its own personnel and use that, leverage that resource with the partnership with either Chamber or some other organization. That's the ideals, that's ideal situation. You would not, in order for any organization to be successful, the city is in charge of holding that contract accountable, and that does, that take, that would take resource and energy. So from that perspective, you would, you want it to be a closer collaboration? I don't, yeah, I'll just stop here. I think in order for both parties to be more successful, you really need to put in the work so that you can be a stronger partnership.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Appreciate that answer.
Questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Just a thank you, both to the Chamber for the submittal and to city staff for a very detailed report. Thanks.
Councilmember LaFaye, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. A little comment here.
I'll do questions first. Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, questions?
I think I'll wait until after the comments.
Perfect. With that, I'm going to open public comment. I have two speaker slips to start with. Whichever one he wants to go first. Jane Walter, thank you. He can toss a coin.
I guess we're the tag team tonight. Good evening. Thanks again, Council. Thanks for hanging in here. I know it's a long day and a big agenda, so I'll try to make it quick. I'm Jane Heath. I am a business owner in Morro Bay, also a resident, of course, and I am a proud member of the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is the heart of Morro Bay business. It is the only organization whose sole mission is supporting and enhancing Morro Bay business. Economic vitality is the number-one goal that you have identified as something to work for, to work toward. Business development is essential to a financially healthy local economy. The contract currently administered by the Chamber is an efficient use of funds with high return on that investment. You couldn't buy what the Chamber gives to you on the open market. You couldn't hire a consultant. You couldn't build an infrastructure. You couldn't provide city staff time to do the things that the Chamber is currently doing. The city does not have the infrastructure or the capacity to handle business development in-house. The Chamber has resources the city can't replicate. It has expertise and relationships to support and build successful businesses. If this contract is not renewed, the initiatives already underway will grind to a halt, and all the current progress will be lost. The most robust business communities in the world work closely with their government to develop a business-friendly environment and to conduct outreach to compatible businesses, encouraging them to locate there. The skills of city staffs are different from the skills of Chambers of Commerce and business owners. The business development contract is a key component of this relationship. Canceling the contract would set business development efforts back. Healthy chambers beget business growth, and growing and healthy businesses beget more healthy and growing businesses. Every time we make a change in how we manage business development, Morro Bay will fall further behind in the critical work of economic growth. If the city is unsatisfied with results from this contract, the answer is to revisit the expectations and deliverables, not to cancel the contract and start from scratch without resources or relationships to be successful. The Chamber needs the city, and the city needs the Chamber. Please retain this important relationship. Thank you.
Jane is such a tough act to follow. She's so smart. Anyway, I just want to say, you know, kind of looking at the management of economic development in a small town with a tourist-based economy, as with most things in life, the devil's in the details, right? And so our Chamber of Commerce is able to specialize on the details that matter most to business owners and would-be business owners. You're getting more for your money than just economic development. I'm a believer that most economic development in Morro Bay, I've been watching this for, what, 25 years, are the granular things that need to be done. And I'd be happy to elucidate at some point, but I'll just leave it at that. It's the small things. It's the look and feel. And these are the kinds of questions that would-be business owners and business owners have, and they would feel overwhelmed without having an intermediary to have them navigate. As I say here, the... So that goes to my second point, which is to say that it's very important that business owners and would-be business owners have an intermediary on their side to help them navigate the city of Morro Bay's requirements of businesses. So you've got an inherent conflict if you kind of bring it into City Hall. I have, and I've gone into the Chamber's offices and have spoken with Dina, you know, about things like, you know, when somebody brings an event to town, it seems like we reinvent the wheel all the time. I mean, it's very easy for somebody to take notes at one of these meetings that occurs every time somebody wants to bring an event to town, jot down the basics and what we can offer, what the cost recovery is on that, what the event producer's expected to do. And that shows that we're a city that knows how to do stuff, you know, that we're a can-do city, that we can do things. And so having the Chamber on their side, I can go into Dina's office and say, hey, Dina, you know, I like this, you know, I've been thinking about this. I think this might be a solution. And I can have Dina toss it around and talk to business owners and that kind of stuff, and maybe it's a horrible idea, or maybe it's a good one, but it gets acted upon. If that goes into City Hall, it becomes a matter of process, right? Who knows? I mean, it just like goes in there and the process works it and works it and works it, and maybe you come out with something, maybe you don't, but it's sure going to take a heck of a lot longer. I think that having the Chamber makes us more agile, makes us more adept, and more democratic. So I'm all for you renewing the economic development contract. Thanks.
Public comment is open on this item. I have no more speaker slips.
Betty Winholz. I'm speaking as a taxpayer whose money pays for the Chamber to some degree. Obviously, it sounds like it's only 20%, 25%. But one of the things that I've always noticed about Morro Bay is that we've always had a visitor center. And the previous director had said here a couple of years ago in council that they don't do that anymore. Yet that, to me, is one of our, the face of Morro Bay to all our tourists. And so it seems to me that part of this contract should necessarily involve a visitor center. And you can see from the chart that was published in the staff report that that hasn't been happening for several years. I thought, and I appreciate Ms. Kimball's explained that different departments take on different pieces of promotion. Like, I know Mr. Muns was hired as a vitality director, and Mr. Singwall's position used to be just planning, but now he's a community development director. And I know that in Wreckin' Parks, that manager is taking on other responsibilities. So I see how the city's incorporating some of these things, and so it makes me wonder how all that fits with the Chamber, if that makes... If we're taking on responsibilities that belong to them, or are we... Are they helping the... It seems convoluted, I guess. And so I guess I would like that explained a little bit. And I do think, and I appreciate the director of the Chamber saying that they do focus on the business. That is their primary job, which is where it should be. So as a taxpayer, whose some of my little money is going to them, I want to see that productive for events in town, things that make people smile and do things, like the kite festival and other things that used to be Chamber responsibilities have all been dished out to other places. So I guess I'm not seeing... I'm seeing that the Chamber is getting a benefit from the city. I'm not seeing how the city's benefiting from the Chamber. Thanks.
Well, folks, my brain is mushed right about now. My name is Mandy Davis, and I am a local business owner, Wild Heart Coastal Adventures, and I'm president of React Alliance. And I am, and we're both members of the Chamber, but I am speaking on behalf of React Alliance right now. And I'm in a bit of a quandary. I have been on the GAC. I am no longer on that, but I've been watching for years, and I watched pretty intently a while I was on the GAC. I do, I want to tell you right now, I do support the contract with the Chamber. I feel that they do a tremendous amount of good in our community from an economic development standpoint, but, and this is a big but, I am really in a quandary as to how the Chamber and the city can connect and make sure that they are doing what is best for our community. And I'm going to refer to the legislative agenda as it relates to Offshore Wind and the BASS project. Within their legislative agenda, they support both of those projects, yet clearly within our community, those projects are not supported. I have found that many of the recommendations from the Chamber of Commerce are coming from a core group of people, not necessarily the entire community of business owners. So what I'm asking is this, is that you renew that contract, but you renew that contract given or with an eye to how the Chamber can represent our community better as opposed to a handful of very biased members. And that started with Erica Crawford. Her bias towards those two projects was extreme. That has continued into this particular, you know, I don't want to call it administration. So I'm hoping that that changes, that the information, you know, should be given to them on both sides. During Erica Crawford's CEO administration, it was primarily information that was given to the public and to the Chamber pro offshore wind. We have asked for the opportunity to be able to give the other side of the story, and we have not been given that opportunity, even though I have addressed it on numerous occasions. So once again, what I am asking for is this: support our Chamber, support how important they are to our community, but hold their feet to the fire in the fact that they need to be able to represent the voice of our community, not just a few individuals. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Josh Cross, and I have the privilege of serving as the CEO of the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce. And this evening, I'm honored to share comments on behalf of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce as you consider the future of the City-Chamber partnership. First, I want to commend city staff for outlining a thoughtful and incomprehensible scope of work. It recognizes the evolving role Chambers play in supporting local economies, not just as cheerleaders, but as boots-on-the-ground collaborators. We like to say that economic development is a team sport, and I think it works best when local government and business leadership are aligned around a shared vision, which I believe the contract will definitely execute on. The Morro Bay Chamber is well-positioned to be a trusted teammate in that effort. Chambers are nimble, community-rooted organizations that bring the voice of business to the table. We know the storefronts, the startups, and the employers. We hear their challenges firsthand and can respond quickly, whether through roundtables, outreach walks, or ombudsman services. A successful partnership goes beyond transactions. It's about trust. Chambers can serve as a bridge between City Hall and the business community, helping demystify permitting processes, celebrating new investments, and fostering civic pride through events and district-wide programs. But what I appreciate most about this proposed collaboration is that it recognizes the Chamber's ability to wear many hats: a convenor, a communicator, an advocate, and a service provider. From leading business engagement in all four of Morro Bay's districts to supporting city-led infrastructure or ordinance changes, the Chamber has the grassroots access and professional capacity to deliver on this contract. So on behalf of the Morro Bay Chamber, I encourage the council to continue seeing this relationship not as a contract, but as a strategic alliance, where resources are shared, insights are exchanged, and both public and private sectors move forward together. This is especially true, as I learned tonight, about wanting to implement your 2017 economic strategy, as well as your 2025, 2027 council goals for economic vitality. Thank you for your time and for your leadership.
Sorry, I know it's late. Judy Setting. I might not be processing this right, but I feel like I'm hearing that you guys are going to have to pay for the Chamber's advice and the businesses' advice and, you know... And I'm seeing that it might cause a bit of favoritism, and where do the residents all fit in on this? Because we have a lot of intelligent residents who give a lot of good advice, and they're not charging you. And, gosh, Barry Brannon comes to mind because he funded the initiative pretty much single-handedly, and you didn't have to pay him. And recently, something very little, well, two years ago, I sent Public Works a rendering for efficient traffic flow on Beach and Main, and I was happy to see that they used it, but I'm not going to charge you anything. So I think I would like you to give them a little less, or even just have it be project-specific. And I think I'd like to see the businesses, since they're profiting in a lot of these things with all the visitors and stuff, it behoves them to want to, you know, do their own marketing, and I'm not sure why the city has to fund that. So, anyway.
Susan Stewart, business owner in Morro Bay, on Morro Bay Boulevard in the downtown, which I guess now is your highest-producing sales tax revenue district. So that was kind of exciting news. One clarification I want to make, and I believe I'm right to the community at large, is these funds are coming not out of the general fund, but out of what's left of SB 1090 from the closure of Diablo Canyon for economic revitalization of communities. There is $836,000 left in that fund. So the money that you would be providing to help support the business community and create those relationships that Dina was talking about, again, not coming from the general fund. As a member of the GAC committee, I do want to say that we do not support any particular projects. We do support investigating anything that might affect the business community and weigh what might be the impacts on the business community for those things. We are not advocating for any particular... We are not advocating for any particular projects, the chamber doesn't. The Government Affairs Committee looks at how government and business relate to each other. We look at things like permit processing, how we can improve that to make it easier for businesses in Morro Bay. We look at revitalization. We are very interested in the downtown development projects, certainly waterfront master planning, city finances, the things that affect our health as businesses and affect the health of the entire community. Again, most of the small businesses in Morro Bay are members of this community as well. Our guiding focus is always to ask ourselves, why do we care? How does it affect or benefit the businesses in the community, and therefore, the community at large, the whole town? How does it make us all viable and healthy? Without your businesses, you don't have a lot of the money that runs this town. We are a small town. We are largely small businesses. We are not corporations. We need each other to survive, and we all survive better if we are all healthy as businesses. So I did send a letter, I'm not going to repeat all of that stuff. Thank you so much to Carla and Zara and Bill for responding. I've been a member of the chamber since I started my business, because I didn't know I wasn't supposed to be a member of the chamber. So I support it, I believe in it, and good luck to you tonight, it's been kind of a rough one, and hope you make decisions soon.
Anyone else for public comment on this item?
Hello, council staff. Shreez Hansen, Chair of the Chamber. It's past my bedtime, I'm going to try and get through this fast. Our community is made up of many residents from different occupations and backgrounds. Many of our residents are business owners. Owning a business allows me to live in Morro Bay. In my 26 years as a business owner here, I am proud to say that over a dozen of my previous employees have gone to open their own businesses. One of my previous employees had a shop uptown. I noticed a new vacancy on the Embarcadero, and she looked into it. They have now successfully been on the Embarcadero for over a decade. We often send customers to one another's stores and items we know the other has in stock. We have synergy within our community, as well as with the hotel. A property owner had a vacancy at his location a couple years ago. He didn't want it sitting empty, because it shines poorly on businesses and is seen as a blight. I gave him retail advice, and he had a good-selling item that was missing from the Embarcadero. That business is still open and thriving over nine years. I joined the Chamber Board four years ago because they shared my positive contributing to our community. It has a bigger, more collective voice, and it can reach more individuals, since mostly the business owners are working, and they can't do it for themselves. Through my participation in chamber events like Squeaky Wheel, I was able to engage and get to know our leadership staff, listen to one another. Through Breakfast on the Bay, I gained knowledge of current policies, updates, local business offerings. Actually, now I have almost everything. I get my teeth done here, get hair, everything, my books. I don't have to go into San Luis, it's all here. My favorite thing during Breakfast on the Bay is when guests get up to tell their business origin stories. I literally need a box of tissues when I hear about the perseverance of my business neighbors, their risk-taking journey, and how grateful they are to be in our town. These are reasons I join the chamber. It provides access to meeting my fellow business neighbors and promotes working together and provides resources. A major benefit of this contract is the ability for staff and the chamber CEO to work synergistically. Knowledge and input from the business community is vital when staff is making recommendations to council. When policies change, having input is key in making sure the changes will be effective, efficient, and able to be implemented. Hearing each other makes us all better. Better city relations, better businesses, better sales, which means more city revenue, which leads to a better place to live. Supporting the chamber supports the entire community. Thank you.
Good evening. This was working a little while ago, I'm sorry. My name is Linda Winters, 31-year resident here in Morro Bay. Going to directly address this to Dina, Lindsay, and Jody. I was going to read the chamber's newsletter and how busy they are, all are, and I was going to read it on my phone, and then I realized I don't have my phone here, and I don't know where it is. So I'm only panicking just a tiny little bit, but that's neither here nor there. I am in full support of all of the businesses here in Morro Bay. I shop diligently, day after day, time after time. I, I don't own a business, but I support the businesses, and I support the events that the chamber does on a regular basis. Usually, if they need volunteers, my hand goes up, because I have no idea how to say no. And I will continue to do that year after year, time after time, because I love Morro Bay, and I love the Chamber of Commerce, and I hope you continue to support it the way I do. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. There's no more public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. And Linda, congratulations on being selected as Chamber Citizen of the Year. Questions to my right? Questions to my left? Comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Dina for her report tonight. Really appreciate all the work that went into that. I know you did a lot of legwork, you know, trying to figure out, you know, how you could address this in a way that would make sense for both partners. So thank you for that. I also want to say thank you to the staff. Lindsay and Jody, I know you work tirelessly to help educate, help ensure that the small business owners that come, that stay, you help them along the way, and I know they appreciate you, and we do too. City Manager, I also really appreciate the report that you put together tonight. I appreciate you answering my question earlier, because I did want to see and hear your viewpoint about what economic development, which is really our first goal, you know, it's the goal that we set, economic vitality, economic development, whatever you want to call it, when you're looking to generate revenue streams or revitalize a downtown, you know, the number-one partner that I think of is the chamber. And since we don't have any sort of in-house resources, it just seems like the logical, most realistic way to, to continue working on, at least at the onset of our goal-setting, which just happened a few months ago, you know, it seems like the logical partnership for now to move forward with the chamber contract. And I'm happy to, you know, explore some other dimensions of it, but I feel that this makes sense. I think that being able to engage more partners as well benefits the city in working towards having a healthy economy here. And I think it bends well to look at some more of the specifics of the contract, and so I'll be very curious to see where we go in terms of exploring that right now with my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember LaPae.
Well, as a member of the San Luis Episcopal Chamber for 42 years, a member of the Morro Bay Chamber for 10 years, two memberships, I value the chamber. When I started my business 42 years ago in San Luis, I used all the resources that they had. After I established myself, I still supported them for the other businesses that came on afterwards. I know this Morro Bay Chamber, I'm very familiar with them, has been going through some tough times, but I think our number-one goal in the city is economic vitality. I don't see any economic vitality, really, within the cities that the chamber really, it falls on them right now. I mean, they produce with the sales tax and some of the memberships, almost 46% of our, our budget, from what I understand. So I do support this, I do have one caveat, though. I would like to make this contingent on a couple scoping things that the city manager comes in, so that if they do not perform on some of their goals, that we don't extend it for two years, but just one year. So, but I do fully support the chamber membership.
Councilmember Lander. Comments?
I, I think chamber, the Chamber of Commerce is a great asset to businesses, and it can be. I think that, I'm happy that it's there for them. I, you know, I, one of the speakers said something about volunteers, and I think that we do have a lot of people in our community that, you know, volunteer for, like to volunteer for things. I think Linda even mentioned that she does. We have Morro Bay in Bloom that takes care of our, you know, landscaping, makes our town look so beautiful. And we donate money to them. I'm concerned about the, what some people have mentioned about the conflicts of interest. I'm also, you know, I know people that are currently chamber members that have told me that they haven't been helped by the chamber, and that are, you know, they know other, and that they're not going to renew due to dissatisfaction. So I think that there's, I think that there's some work that the chamber needs to, to do, to make sure that they're not being biased, and to make sure that they are helping. I mean, if we're expecting them to help all businesses in Morro Bay, I hope that they could help at least all of their members, and it's sort of concerning to me to hear that that's not the case. Let's see. I, I think they maybe could work on their membership. It seems like a, kind of a low number. We have a total of, it looks like, almost 1,900 businesses in Morro Bay, and I think they have 200 members or something like that. And as far as the contract that is here, I'm wondering how it works to, to do the, I'm not looking at the actual agenda item, but there's a, there's a, there's a listing in here of where they job shadow, or, you know, shadow new businesses, and when I look at what the new businesses are, they're, a large majority of them are building and construction, and, let's see, food and, you know, it's business and industry, I guess they could do that. But, I mean, it's, some of it, oh, vacation rentals, that's another large one, I just don't know. To the average person in Mor, that lives in Morro Bay, I'm, I question how this helps, this contract would help them. I also question why, you know, when I hear that they want to work with businesses on Quintana, why that hasn't happened in the past? To do more listening sessions for Quintana and North Morro Bay, what will that do? We've already done that, and it seems like we keep doing that over and over again, and nothing really comes of it. It's just like, we did this, so we are living up to our contract. I just, I personally would like to see more results from, if we're going to have a contract, and I don't know how we ensure that we get results, so those are my comments.
Councilmember Apples.
Thank you. I'm going to cut to the chase, hopefully move the discussion along. I'm excited for opportunities for the Chamber of Commerce and the city to work together. I think, I think we can all agree that a healthy Chamber of Commerce is, is a desired thing for any community. And given the fact, too, that our city goals, the number-one that we put on the list, economic vitality and fiscal health, there should be a role that the chamber should play with that. What can be difficult about this process is the amount of money that we're talking about versus the amount of money that we spend, sometimes hundreds of thousands or in the low millions in consulting contracts, and then the desire sometimes for policymakers to want to micromanage the relationship, and it can just get messy. I don't want it to get messy. So, that being said, looking at the chamber's proposal, I see the last two items, startup to sustainability, as well as the downtown district initiative, directly relevant to our city goals, and I would love to pick those up. The other services, I think frankly, and I've been involved with chambers for a long time, a lot of that is, I view as chamber functions, you know, that any chamber should be doing. Those are Chamber of Commerce functions. But I think as far as a contract with the city that's, that's directly relevant to our city goals, and that will allow us not to sort of micromanage the situation, would be those last two. So that's, that's where I'm, I would like to start the conversation and see where it goes. $20,000 for the, for the startup to sustainability, and $5,000 for the downtown district initiative, $25,000. I'd also, because, because one of the things that we're looking at potentially, as indicated in the staff report, is an in-house economic development person. I think this opens up the door for future collaboration between the chamber and the city also. I mean, there's a bit of a transition right now with these goals that the city adopted in, in figuring out how we're going to deploy them. So I don't, I wouldn't want the chamber to think this is a closed door. This is, this to me is opening the door on something that would be direct, and then as, as, as the city determines a more concrete path moving forward, whether the city desires anyone in-house, or to contract more with services, specific ones like those last two in the chamber proposal, then we could look at opening that door further. That's, so that's what I'm looking at, one year for the $20,000 and the $5,000, so one year for the $25,000, those last two items that the chamber proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Campbell, I have one question. Do, you had shared about how some of the economic development duties have been divided up in the departments with community development and harbor vitality, and some of the shifts that we've made internally. Do we cost allocate any of that economic development fund money we have still left over from Diablo Two, that, those duties?
Yes, we, we, yes, the short answer is, is yes, and as, yeah, without getting too much details.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I just wanted to verify that, as, as we transition to include this in some of the other departments and what that looks like, if their funding is coming out of that, rather than the general fund per se. My concern, I think, is, you know, we have a very limited amount of money left from the Diablo funds, and when we funded the chamber at the $90,000 level for those years was right when we had received, everybody was receiving the decommissioning money, and the funds are quickly depleting and leave us with either no way to continue a contract without using general fund money, whether it's through the chamber, or whether we hire an in-house community development person, of what that looks like. This conversation, I think, is kind of a continuation, and, and like others to my left here, you know, we've all three served on the Chamber Board, and been chamber members for years. I served on it for five years, and Cindy and Jeff did also, and been a member for many years, 37 years. My problem goes back again to the implementation of this. I think that's been my concern, and it was a concern I shared last year, and, you know, to, to no fault of Dina's, who's just been there eight months, but the fact that over the last year or two, with the transition of, of the last year or two, with the transition of, of the former CEO leaving and policy shifts where you no longer were doing events like the avocado margarita festival and things like that, that were revenue enhancing for the Chamber as well as the community because there's always mutual benefits, it just seems like the trajectory's kind of gone, you know, down, down in that sense. And I, I'm concerned still, as I was last year and shared when, when Jocelyn Brennan was at the helm temporarily and brought forth a contract, the, the level of experience or qualifications for some of the implementation of some of the goals, I think, is, is my concern is, some of these are robust goals and when you're contracting with an economic development coordinator or hiring someone, you're hiring someone who's got that educational experience degree or, or some sort of, you know, long-term experience doing, doing this. The listening tours that were mentioned, yeah, I'm a little disappointed in that. We've already been down that path two years ago and the city funded that and this, I guess, is an example for me of the, of the concerns I have about implementation of, of what these goals were and that was done. I attended those meetings as some of the others of you in here did also and came back to this final meeting and there was no collaboration of solutions and no strategic planning from it. So I'm not, I'm not sure when I'm looking at this, you know, at something that's funded at fifteen thousand dollars for, and that's just one part of it, how we go back to what we just did two years ago where we never made any headway with what was already done. I mean, that study should actually still be sitting on the shelf at the Chamber. It's not that old. If we're referring back to economic development projects from two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen that still have relevancy, certainly that would from two years ago. So this is my concern about how some of the things have not come forward over the last year or two and I hope, my hope is that with someone new at the helm and, and the support of the Chamber Board and, and the Chamber members that we can start turning that the other way. That being said, after looking at the contract, I have concerns then about funding some of those things. I would remind the, the Chamber and those that are advocating that we do supplement the rent for the Chamber and I think that the Council will support continuing that to provide office space for them at a, at a very reduced price to keep that affordable. But at this point, I think I would support Councilmembers Eccles' two comments about the two items of downtown district incentives, which is something that we talked about as a council goal and the vitality initiatives where the Chamber can work with the city that it's doing in-house business licensing now and help start up. But a lot of these things and in partnerships, many things cross over, but a lot of these other things I see as Chamber membership services and not a function of economic development per se of the city. So those are my comments and I will pass it back to anyone else who wants to add something.
Well, I mean, I share the same goal, the same concerns of implementation, but again, I mean, if I had to do a contract, I wouldn't even have all these scoping things. I would basically say, give the city manager the authority to actually scope it out. I'm for giving them fifty thousand dollars for a variety of reasons, but I'd like to see them bring in three new businesses, create an event for the city of Morro Bay that brings in revenue and TOT and then take the twenty-four, twenty-five top sales, sales tax producers, which only forty percent of them are members of the Chamber of Commerce, increase that to at least seventy-five percent and hold a round table for those particular sales taxes. Sales taxes are number one revenue source. Let's try to enhance that. To give them twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, that's generous, but I'd like to do the fifty thousand myself personally.
I, I'm in agreeance with Councilmember LeFay in the sense that I feel like there has been changes, obviously, with them getting a new CEO. I do also want to say, I think it's our responsibility to give them really clear direction as well. And, and so it's been a little bit, I think, since last year, my frustration with this is just not viewing that we've been, you know, sometimes we might be too specific in areas where we're trying to like tell them how to do their stuff and other times I feel like we're not giving them enough specifics. So it's a tough, you know, balance there for sure, no doubt. But I'm more apt to, as Councilmember LeFay described, to set out, you know, a scope of work that allows for us to say, okay, you, for example, matched up three businesses, whether that's a business that wants to grow in town that already exists here or it's one from somewhere else, say High Street Deli, I've mentioned this before. We've got a location open on Morro Avenue and we know that you're a successful business in Los Osos, you know, hey, let's have the conversation and Dina can be kind of that conduit or the Chamber, somebody from the Chamber could be that conduit because we don't really have that person per se in-house or do they have the time to do that? So it's just another option, another lever that we have to pull in order to, you know, get, connect a landlord that's got an open space, grow a business. I mean, all of the sales tax revenue helps and I, I'm, I think what's also important to know here is I, I don't think that we're discussing something that is necessarily a long-term solution for us. I think right now what we're discussing is more of a, a short-term solution for two organizations that are really trying to figure out what the answer is to this big question and how to really achieve an economic development-focused program in order to achieve, you know, the rest of the goals that we have. So that's just more my thought process. I think that they offer that to us in a more specific way than just divvying up the economic development responsibilities on staff. I just think there needs to be more specific and I like some of the options, especially the round table. We used to do that a lot and I found those to be very effective. So thank you for mentioning that.
I think, I think my goal is not to divvy it all up, so maybe there was a misunderstanding of that as part of the conversation and the, the goals that we've set forth for economic vitality would be that we would look at bringing somebody in-house and we've had that conversation before rather than piecemealing it out a little bit at a time. So I would rather focus some of that money on what is left there to get that first year in, so.
I, can I, I like that idea and I could agree to the suggestion of Councilmember Eccles. I, the only thing is I don't understand, I think that would be a futile attempt to shadow throughout the first year a general contractor. I don't think that would be a successful thing to do and so I wouldn't think it would be all new business licenses, so maybe something else should be added instead of that because it looks like a lot of the business licenses are that kind of business that wouldn't want someone to shadow them or need them to. I don't know.
Thank you. So both Councilmembers LeFay and Edwards mentioned scope. I mean, we've got the scope provided for us in the, in the Chamber document and I would even go so far as to say twenty-five thousand dollars for those two items. That way it gives the Chamber flexibility in how they address those two. I just, I don't want to micromanage the contract. I also appreciate your comments, Councilmember Edwards, about this, this is the opening of, this is the beginning of sort of the next phase based on our, on our city goals. And so this, I view this as, as a door opener for more, more functions that the Chamber can perform moving forward. So, yeah, so that's based, based too on what Councilmember Landrum just said, my proposal would be twenty-five thousand dollars for the last two items combined on, on the list that the Chamber gave us for startup to sustainability and the downtown district initiative. And then, then the Chamber can divvy up as they see and, and move with the ball as things move.
And, and just to add that if that, if things continue as they are, then that also includes the rent too, right, too? If they, if they do.
Yes, thank you. And I think that's a significant factor too, that the, the rent at two hundred dollars a month is, is essentially a subsidy that adds to the value that the city is, is, is bringing to the table for the Chamber, sure. Yeah, so I'll.
Clarification, so basically what you're saying here is to take the two scope items and just, just award the Chamber of Commerce of Morro Bay just twenty-five thousand dollars period for a two-year period, is that correct?
I'm thinking for a one-year period because this is, this is evolving. I expect it to evolve over the next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so I move that, let me get my agenda in front of me. I move that the city of Morro Bay enter a contract with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the function of Chamber-defined, what did you call them, Dina? Chamber-defined services of startup to sustainability and the downtown district initiative.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Motion carries for one. We're at the nine-thirty. We have one item left and the consultant has been waiting, so with staff's indul, or Council's indulgence, I'd like to see if we can finish the last item.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Collick?
Do we have a deadline?
No, he's here.
Oh, sorry.
So, we're on, Mayor?
I just want to try and be as succinct as we can through it since it's so late. Thank you.
Certainly, yes. Mayor, Council, this is the last item on your agenda now and I wanted to give an introduction to the item and this was, was first, was last discussed at the February eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting. At that time, the Council directed staff to entry into agreement for not to, not to exceed two hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred was Bill Gaines' audio to perform design and installation and Council at that time also did direct staff to bring back design alternatives. That's why we're here today, to, to present some options of the design and, and then our recommendation is option two in the staff memo. The key considerations for tonight are staff seating area changes and static video effects for, for most advisory committee meetings. So there's some change on that and then some maintenance costs would, will be different depending on the design options. So with that, I, Public Works Director has a brief presentation to, to, to take us through this. Mr. Collick, I'll kick it over to you.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball and thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. We'll try to keep this light. I know we've brought this to Council a couple of times already, but please stop us if you have any questions. I'm not going to go into any of the details of the designs. We do have Connor Vache here from Bill Gaines Audio, should the Council want to do that. So very quickly, at a high level, the project budget, we have around five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred twenty-seven from PEG and we get that money because of our broadcasting on Channel Twenty and then general fund money is in at two ninety-two. And our expend, our expected expenditures will be fifteen thousand for the design, which we had talked about at the last meeting, and then the recommended alternative is two hundred and six thousand. And with that, if that is spent, then we will have almost three hundred thousand dollars remaining. That remaining amount would be for building improvements. Just wanted to let City Council know, we have a meeting with the, the heating contractor later this month. There's some other building improvements that we hope to do by the end of the calendar year as part of a next phase. This is really just to focus on the AV improvements. We don't really know what to plan for the building until we know how much that part of the project is going to cost. So we had three project goals. This was talked about in the staff report. One, install a reliable, modern AV system. Even today, we saw some issues with that early on in the meeting. Two, to realize any potential cost efficiencies with the new system. And three, I didn't mean to make these all capitalized, but keep Vets Hall open. So all the alternatives that, that we have here achieve this. First of all, they achieve a modern system. I'm not going to go into detail about that. I think it's obvious that if we replace what we have now, which is twenty-five or so years old, it's going to be a modern system. We can talk about that, that's why I've graded out. But I want to talk about, about the cost efficiencies and City Manager Kimball alluded to some of these. So we, we are proposing that the dynamic camera view is reserved for City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings and static camera is a reserve for PWA, HAB, CFAC and Wrenton Park Commission meetings. I just want to talk very briefly about what this means. Dynamic camera is when you're watching the City Council meeting and Greg Collick is talking and the camera's on me and then City Attorney Schultz is talking and the camera goes to him and then the mayor's talking and the camera goes to her. We, if, if we do that for all the meetings, which is what we do now, that means we need an additional technician. And it is very common for, even in this county, many advisory boards aren't, there's no video at all. And so we propose that we would have static camera during those meetings. A static camera is, there's going to be one mounted camera, that camera is on that advisory board the entire meeting and that's it. It's not moving between speakers and there are cost efficiencies with making that move. That said, City Council and Planning Commission meetings, no change. The other cost efficiency is right now we have to set up and break down tables and cameras and monitors and microphones, so those would be fixed for, for the future. And then to keep Vets Hall open, we are proposing to have semi-permanent staff seating, that is movable though. And so I just want to talk about that because this is a change that the public would notice. We'd eliminate this area of staff seating. Staff can be seated in the audience, it's not uncommon for other cities and we'd essentially keep that side of the room with new tables that are on casters, so they can just be rolled off. They would have microphones and monitors affixed to them. It would just be a matter of unplugging them and moving them to the side. That way we can, again, keep Vets Hall open. We would propose to use the same dais, just add monitors to it and, and microphones to it. If anyone wants to rent the stage, they still could do that, it would just mean moving stuff over to the side. So we made some of these changes because that was just the feedback that we received at the last meeting, that you guys wanted something simpler and you still wanted to keep the Vets Hall open. So very briefly, alternative one is a fully manual system. You have a manual mixing of audio by technician and a manually managed dynamic camera with another technician. It requires two to three operators. I say two to three because there's, we may need more operators to handle Zoom depending on if that's something we want to keep in the future, not a decision that we're looking at tonight, but I, I don't want to mislead the Council, say two operators and then sometimes there's three. The Zoom does take a lot of work. It can be difficult to manage a Zoom and let people in and raised hands and this kind of thing when you're doing other things like mixing audio or, or video. The manual system has a virtually zero hassle factor and that's because we would have a couple of technicians in the back room. If something were to go wrong, they're here to troubleshoot. And the upfront cost is a hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars. That's based on the detailed design that Connor put together. I want to make a correction. I want to make a correction from the staff report. I had a higher number for the annual cost, and we can talk about that briefly, but it's, I redid the calculation and found an error. And so it's actually $69,620. And that's based on the labor and the annual maintenance. I mean, every system's going to have some level of maintenance, and so we're, you know, just over $69,000, almost $70,000 for annual maintenance, which is pretty low. I'm sorry, the maintenance for a system is low, but the labor is high. For the semi-automated system, alternative two, this is our recommended alternative. We have, and I apologize, I have an error here as well, but this actually would be automated audio, so that would not be manually mixed. And it would, I don't know how this happened because I looked at this seven times, but it would have manually dynamic cameras. So we'd have one technician back there managing the cameras during City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings, but not audio. So we just flipped those two. It would require zero to one operators if it's a PWA meeting or HAB meeting or an advisory board meeting. You know, for example, PWA meeting, as Public Works Director, I'd come in, turn on the system, static camera, mics are recording, ready to go, no operator in the back. And because there's kind of low maintenance to that, the risk factor or the hassle factor is low, is, I would call it very low, and it would only be during the non-City Council, non-Planning Commission meetings. Pretty easy to troubleshoot and maintain as a system because, again, during the Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings, which are much more frequent, we'd actually have an operator still in the back. Upfront cost is a little bit higher, $205,900 based on our estimate, and the annual cost is 31,800, and that's based on 2800, excuse me, 31,800. That's based on 28,800 on labor, and we added a little bit more for system maintenance. That comes up when tables are moved around. Now things need to be readjusted or reprogrammed. Because the system has that automation, we may need to throw some time on it. And then finally, the automated system, this would automate audio mixing and dynamic camera. It would require zero operators, but we would need a specialist to come in and troubleshoot and maintain the system. This one, while I was originally interested in this, I've come to the conclusion that the hassle factor is very high. For example, tonight, if something went wrong with the system, it would be on one of us in the room to go in the back and figure it out. And these meetings are very serious. They're the business of the city, and to me, it feels risky if we were to have a fully automated system like this. The upfront costs are higher at 233,500, but the annual cost is lower because there's no labor. There is maintenance labor, but not in-meeting labor. And then it would also require a $7,000 a year license fee. It's an AI machine learning program that would have to be used to operate the cameras. So just high-level comparison, this is information you already have. Those are the corrected numbers for the manual system. I think on the staff report, it was around a $400,000 difference between System 1 and 2 on the 10-year cost. With the updated amount, it's around a $300,000 difference, so just wanted to point that out. And we already talked about the very low hassle factor. I want to talk about the assumptions because we had some questions over email. So again, dynamic camera and the assumptions that play into these numbers. The dynamic camera would be reserved for City Council and Planning Commission meetings in all of the scenarios. And then the static camera in all of the scenarios would be for the advisory boards. We did a 10-year average of $120 an hour for a skilled technician. We assumed five-hour meetings for 48 meetings for City Council and Planning Commission, and, you know, some are going to be longer, some will be shorter. And a four-hour average for 24 PWA, HAB, CFAC, and RPC meetings, four hours is sort of a minimum. It's really difficult to get a tech out here for an hour or two, even if the meetings are that short. So we wanted to assume a minimum that was realistic, and that's how we got the numbers that we did. Finally, we did tell council, the last time we brought this to you all, that we have a couple add-on options. I'm not going to go into detail. We went into it in the staff report, but we could add on a lobby monitor for 2750 if we wanted to. Also, voting controls would be about $10,000 more. They might add some more maintenance costs, but those are the add-ons. And again, our conclusion is that the design alternative two, which is a semi-automated system, is the most cost-effective system in the long run and also offers strong production quality, reliability, and flexibility. And with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. I really appreciate this. Mr. Qualick, bringing this back and taking into consideration some of the things that I believe we talked about before, including mobility. It'd be interesting knowing that everything's going to be on wheels, so I have that visual going on there. I did have a question with regard to the alternative two that you are recommending tonight, and is it correct in saying so the 38 is in labor on that, on the use of that for all meetings, correct? The 38,000?
31,000.
Oh, 31,000. I thought I said 38.
It says 31 here on my thing.
Oh, I thought I said, sorry, I thought it said 38. Okay, 31,000, close enough.
Yeah.
And that's for, that's for all the meetings, council, PWA, all the meetings for labor. So is there a difference, I guess, when it comes to using the dynamic setup? Is there more cost on that for labor, or is it the same? He's nodding his head.
Sir, so for dynamic camera, there's less annual cost because there's not a technician back there, so we're not paying that labor. There's more maintenance cost, and there's other cities that have tried this in the county, and I think one is still doing it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, because I was just wanting to clarify why we would use the dynamic for council and planning meetings specifically in addition to the static. So I just wanted to clarify the cost on labor and the scenario.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question, but for the semi-automated, yes, I thought you were comparing between scenario two and three.
No, no, sorry.
So the idea behind doing dynamic camera for council and planning commission meetings and not at the advisory board meetings is it's, just in comparing ourselves to other cities in the county, it's, we already go above and beyond in the number of mediums in which we broadcast to and the video production of all of our meetings. That comes at an expense to the city, and one of our goals was to look for cost efficiencies. We thought that it's very reasonable to have dynamic camera for City Council and Planning Commission meetings because those are the two bodies that have obligations to the city to have binding decisions, where the others are really advisory boards. I mean, there are some entities in this county, even one of our neighbors, they don't even record meetings, they don't even do audio recordings of meetings. So we really go above and beyond, but it just didn't feel totally necessary to show public commenters or, you know, who's speaking what. You'll be able to hear everything. You'll be able to see what the, what everyone is doing behind the dais for the advisory board meetings, but just without that dynamic camera view.
Yeah, and that's going to be a cost savings for us.
Yes.
Because I think we pay like $60,000 right now for AGP labor, right?
Right now, that's what's in our current contract.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks for the report. I really don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for taking the direction that council narrowed down and then really being responsive with that. And I feel so poorly for our consultant with Bill Gaines Audio. Are you with Bill Gaines?
I am, yes.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask you just like a softball question, just to give you something because you've been here for four or five hours or six hours. In a couple of sentences, why do you like option number two?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Echols. Option number two, I think, is a good medium between the two. I don't think that full automation is, full automation of video is not up to the standard of what I'd like to see you guys have as a final product. And I think that the manual systems are great, but I think there is a good, a good medium here where we can give you the full control of the manual system, but still be able to have video with much less interaction for some of those, not less important meetings, but smaller meetings.
Of course.
One question. Are you, is your firm going to be installing it, or do you hire an outside contractor?
So the design and install was part of the contract that the council approved in February?
Let's see, so you could still, let me just clarify that you could still do the static camera option, like at particular meetings, other meetings that you wanted to? It would just require more labor, and so that cost would, if you did the semi-automated one, you would be paying more than the 31,000 in that case?
Yes, but I just want to clarify, it's actually, the static is the one that saves on labor. It's the, it's automated that, or I'm sorry, the manual that requires the labor. So if we have static, that means we just turn it on and it's ready to go.
Right. But if you wanted it to be more dynamic at certain meetings, maybe I didn't say that right, I thought I did, you could, it just would incur more cost.
I apologize.
So it would change, it would change the cost from 31,800 to some other number?
Yes, unless it's automated.
Pardon me?
Unless it's automated.
Yeah, no, I'm saying with the semi-automated.
I'm sorry, yes.
And, okay, and then would that be the case in, like, joint meetings and also like goal-setting workshops and things like that?
Good question, Councilmember Landrum. So joint meetings, we would have to figure out how to manage because the system and the cost efficiencies within it depend on mounted cameras and mounted mics. Joint meetings would have to be, in my view, laid out on the, on the chamber floor here. And I, in my view, those would be a separate deal. So we would, for example, if we had a contract with AGP, we would have some sort of clause in there where we could purchase AV services for those one-off meetings, which is not dissimilar to how we do it now.
Okay. Okay, did I ask all the questions? I think I did. Thank you.
Public comment is open on this item.
My name is Jim Cornutt, and I've been out of commission from about January, so this kind of came on at the, well, I just actually saw it. I did send a letter, lengthy letter, to everyone on the council. I missed the deadline to get it onto the minutes. But my issue started about four years ago with the entire presentation by AGP. The quality of the visual was horrible. They would put colored type on colored backgrounds. You couldn't read charts. You couldn't read anything on the TV. What compounded that problem for me was I'm hearing impaired, as are 32%, 37% of the residents in the City of Morro Bay. So what I see needed is closed captions. I had a very lengthy back and forth with FCC, AGP, I think I detailed things in the letter to you. I've got stacks of communication. In any case, it's frustrating to be trying to watch something when you can't understand it. And it's important things. You're spending citizens' money, my money. I did get a response today about closed captions, saying that I can see it on streaming. Well, I can see it on YouTube, but I don't pay for YouTube. I pay, you know, the city, I pay for the city. I own a house here. I pay taxes. So I don't know if it's even possible, but I'd like the city to look into it. You've got AI, you have all these things going on in the world right now. You can talk to your phone, and that goes to somebody. You go to Bay Theater, they actually, you can pick up one of their closed caption readers. I can watch films. So it's not impossible. It is just extremely frustrating, and it comes down to a matter of communication to the citizens, saying, you know, saying the screens are going to be better, this is going to be better. These screens are better now than they used to be. The presentation you had with a white background, that makes sense, so that's better. But as far as closed captioning, it's not going to help me, and if I can't come to a city council, I'm not going to know what's going on. So I'd like you to consider it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, City Council Bob Lloyd, AGP Video. To address the gentleman's closed caption concern, we definitely do have mediums to be able to make that happen with a modern design, a modern system that would definitely be more compatible to a system. As far as joint meetings and other things, the system will be more of a network-related process, so expanding the system to accommodate more cameras, more features, more functions for a special meeting process, like a large joint stakeholders group or a sub-joint meeting is definitely possible within the new system. Our current production process is so archaic, I can't add anything more to the system that is already here. So we very look forward to the option two, and we want to make sure we get in with the design element part of the process of it, so we cover all of these bases, but thank you for your time. Over available for questions?
Thank you. Anyone else is coming up, please be ready. We're really pushing the envelope timewise.
I'm ready. I swear. Nick DeAngelis. This is like, I don't know how many times on this topic, the third, the fourth, whatever it is. The questions I have, is this hall able to be rented out? If the answer is yes, the presentation is incomplete yet again. I'm not really sure how many times it has to continue to be incomplete. The cost that is actually going to be approved is cost for the work that needs to get done, but there's a return on that investment that is beneficial to everybody that's not included in the presentation. So maybe if we take closed captioning, we take all of the other things that are needed, we may need the best viable product that is outside of what everyone else does. Who cares? This is the first time I've been in this room. I usually do the calls over the phone. Needs an overhaul. So if we could, you know, allocate the right funds appropriately, account for the ROI, the spend is not going to be as significant as what it looks like. And then what can the city make on events here with the best entertainment optionalities, whatever it is? But again, like, I'm not sure how many times we have to see presentations like this. It's, again, incomplete. I don't think that the council is getting everything that they should get. What is the ROI? Approve the spend. If the events are a thing, then we run the events, and everybody has a good time here, as is in every Vets Hall or every, you know, type of hall like this. So I just, like, we tighten this stuff up. I waited till 10 o'clock, and we're sitting here not talking about ROI attached to the presentation. This investment could be, you know, far excessive and far greater for the city to actually generate income off of, you know, even just something as simple as an AV, you know, an AV upgrade, and we get some paint on this thing or whatever. So I'll yield back my time, but hopefully we can get some good presentations that account for ROI going forward.
I like option one. I don't, you know, being on one of those little committees, if you, if I'm watching TV and I only see you guys and I don't see who's speaking, I'm not going to be watching anymore because I don't know, one, you guys are going to be, you know, way back, and it's not going to move, and what if something goes wrong and then the meeting stops being broadcasted? And what if something goes wrong and then the meeting stops being broadcasted? I think you have to have at least one person present at every meeting. I mean, that's just, and, and I like what he said, that, that you have to make it, it's, it's not just about the money, it's about the benefit to the community, about us individuals, to Mr. Kornut, the rest of us, who want to go back and watch that meeting because we missed it. And there's important things that are said at PWEB, and there's actually important things that are said at Wreckin' Parks. And so you need to not look at it as just a dollar. And I would also suggest that you have PWEB money every year. And why can't that PWEB money pay for the number one? Why does it have to be number two? Why can't we be involved as the community from our TV as much as we are in the room? And so I'm going to put in my last plug for overhead projector. I'm not ever forgetting that. That needs to be part of this deal, and I want to know why it's not. So PEG money can pay for this annually for the greater money. I want my overhead. And I don't get why an extra person requires the Zoom, or the Zoom requires the extra person, because we do Zoom now. So that doesn't make sense to me. And we get by with two people right now. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Qualick, none of this includes those other upgrades that are slated for the room, correct? That's a different item that'll be coming before us?
Correct. Well, it may come before you, depending on the contract amount.
Excuse me, for all the other upgrades that are slated for the building itself?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Questions, comments?
I have a question. With, with regards to the advisory board meetings that weren't, didn't make the cut, would, as, would you still be able to see who's speaking?
Thank you for the question. You'd be able to see everyone on the dais. You wouldn't see the public speaker.
Oh.
But you'd be able to hear them, it'd be recorded.
Okay.
I mean, and I just want to explain our rationale there. I, you know, I'm a liaison for the Public Works Advisory Board. I've been to HAB, I've been to CFAC, I've been to Wreckin' Parks. Most meetings have one or zero public speakers. Sometimes CFAC has a few. But, and so we would still have the flexibility with the system to make adjustments if there was some meeting where, you know, the city council wanted it to have Dynamic Camera, no problem. We just have to get our tech in there.
Okay, and then the, how much PEG money do we get a year? No, not a year. I don't think that's a year.
I don't have that information in front of me. I don't know if I'm looking at finance.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm, oh. Oh, okay. I mean, yeah, okay. I just want to know, like, what would we do with that, if we, if we get more than we're spending, what would we do with the rest of it?
It's a good question, Councilmember Landrum. So I surmise that we can use some of that for building improvements, because this all goes towards being able to broadcast to the public the affairs of the government, so.
And would your upgrades to the building include better lighting?
We are looking at better lighting.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And on lighting, there's some things we could do in the short term and maybe upgrade if the council desired in the future. But right now, these screens are rough and old. I think just changing the screens, there's actually new LED lights up there, but the screens, I think, aren't doing us any favors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Someone want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the city council here approved the semi-automatic, automatic system for our audiovisual.
Is that Alternative 2?
Alternative 2, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Future agenda items?
I have one. I would like to see if we could start a promotional coordinating committee. After the T-Bid meeting that myself and Zara came to, we came to the conclusion that there's no coordinating committee, like, we'd have one T-Bid, one city council. In other words, I'd like to have that as a future agenda, agenda for the city of Morro Bay, a promotional coordinating committee to discuss it.
I support that.
Do you have clarification on what that, so you're going to need to meet with the city manager then and clarify what exactly the parameters of what you're looking for is?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Any other future agenda items?
I do. Since we've had, in recent, recent days, it's just come to my attention that I, I think it would be a good conversation to have to look at city council having city-issued cellphones. Yeah, city-issued cellphones with, with the public records requests and things like that. I just think that that would make things more, more, you know, easy to, and less invasive and all of that, so.
Yeah, I support looking into that, particularly with, well, yes, I support that.
Good. Thank you.
We'll look into it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got one, but I'll need to enlist the city attorney on this one. We have the agenda item coming on the 27th regarding the Roundabout, but then we also became aware of this reconsideration issue. So we're, we're going to revisit the Roundabout on the 27th. Can staff let me know what the, how narrow that, that is for the 27th, and if we need to give you direction tonight to widen that avenue?
Sure. So the, the item coming back, and I'll look to Mr. Qualick also, was to get clarification, because now that you have stopped the EIR issue is, is what is our position as far as the project moving forward with Caltrans and Slocog, because you heard that it's possible for them to do it. So we'll be coming back for you for not only that issue to discuss, but also whether there was anything you wanted to state as far, as far as the funding, is possibly reallocating that to a different project. The issue came up about reconsidering. You've made the decision to not go forward with the environmental review, so that won't be coming back for, for a review next meeting, unless, of course, there was a motion for reconsideration. A motion for reconsideration is allowed under the Roberts Rules of Order and also in our policies and procedures. Under Roberts Rules of Orders, a motion for reconsideration can only be done at the same meeting, so it would have had to been done at last meeting. But under our policies and procedures, which we're allowed to extend that, you, under our, those rules of our own, you can do it at the next meeting. It has to be done either at that meeting where the action was taken, or it can be done at the next meeting, which is where we are right now. The motion for reconsideration of that last decision has to be made by someone who is in the majority of the action that was taken. It can be seconded by anybody. Debate is limited just to having it reconsidered. So if you made that, if one of the majority from last time made that motion, then certainly we could, and it passed, then that would be one of the issues also, would be the reconsideration of whether the environmental review could be come forward. And now that being said, you certainly, at any time, can set a future agenda item to restart the environmental over, but it wouldn't be on the next agenda without a reconsideration motion.
Right, okay, thank you. In light of the fact that Slocog is having a meeting tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, yeah, this week, and they essentially, from what I could read from the agenda, from their executive committee agenda, they're moving forward with this. So, and the motion to reconsider then is not, is doing just that. That would, that would allow this body to reconsider at the next meeting.
The action that you took at last meeting.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, all right. So I am going to move to reconsider the motion on stopping funding of the environmental that we took last meeting, to see if I get a second and see how.
I support that.
I'll support that.
I support that.
And may I speak to it now, just for a moment? Yeah, so the, the, well, obviously, first off, I've been listening to our constituents. I'll just leave it at that. I appreciate respectful dialogue. I appreciate, as, as, as a policymaker now, folks approaching us in a respectful, level-handed manner. So I'm going to leave it at that. But I do listen to everyone that comes to me. And given the Slocog Executive Committee agenda, that this is moving forward, I, we need to have that seat at the table, so that's why I'm putting forward this reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I clarify something? With the Slocog's agenda, that's not a, I mean, don't they have to vote on that? Doesn't the board have to vote on that?
Yeah. The staff report indicated that essentially they're, they're doing everything in their power to move forward with this.
The staff is? Or the, the board is?
Yeah, that's the recommendation from staff to their board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, if I were a betting man, I would bet that the board is going to follow that staff recommendation.
Are there any other future agenda items?
We need a vote on it.
Oh, a full vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one. We're adjourned.